Okay, folks, well, I believe it's 7:00 and I will call the meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville to order. It's Tuesday, October 13th. It's, like I said, 7:00 and we are hosting this meeting via Zoom. I do not believe that there's anybody in the council chambers. Adam, are you there?
I am there and it's just us and pretty much most of the police department.
It's just you and the police department. Okay, well, good. Then you're well protected.
Correct.
Oh, Candace? We have Candace? There are too many people. I can't see everybody. I do not see Candace yet. Are we expecting Candace? Jody and Adam?
Yes, we are.
Sure.
Oh, there's Nicola. Okay. We are expecting Candace. Well, I think in light of the fact, I suppose we need her for the swearing in, too. She's coming right now. Okay.
All right, Candace, we are on roll call.
Okay, there we go. Can you ever hear me?
We can hear you.
Yay, okay. Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Kathy Cop?
Here.
Jason Arts?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
And Killian? Do we have Ken?
Yeah, we do, but he has to unmute Ken.
Okay.
There we go.
Oh, I see him. There he is. Okay. Robin Klein?
Yep.
Isaac Shanley?
Here.
Okay, folks, we'll start this evening. We have two presentations. The first is the ceremonial swearing in of new police officers Jared Bartlett and Kevin Murphy. So, Crystal, I think, or Candace, I think you do that, right?
Yes.
I'm Doug.
Just trying to get this pulled up. Sorry, give me a second.
Well, what we were planning here was a little different because we don't have the luxury of all being in person here, but I've got both Jared Bartlett and Kevin Murphy here with me. I'm going to intro them and then we're going to have them do their ceremonial swearing in here from the council chambers. Jared comes to us from Jefferson, Wisconsin. Started out schooling at M A T C in Madison. He was a May 2020 graduate in the CJ Department over here at UW-Platteville. He was a CSO for us for a number of years and he's most recently a Southwest Tech Law Enforcement Academy graduate. Kevin Murphy comes to us from a little bit further ranging. He's our tennis player from Loris College, originally from the state of Washington, recently married, worked at the Dubuque Residential Facility in, for Iowa DOC or Department of Corrections, and he is also a Southwest Tech Law Enforcement Academy graduate. So, we're going to have Jared get sworn in first and so give me a minute while we get to the podium and then we'll have Kevin Murphy.
I appoint him to the office of police officer that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Congratulations, Jared.
Hi, Kevin Murphy. Having been appointed to the office of police officer, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Congratulations, Kevin.
Does either Jared or Kevin have a few words they want to say? Doug's iPad is all over the place.
Oh, they're good.
Do you, Adam, do either of them want to say anything?
No, they're good. They said they're good.
Okay, then I think that's the swearing in, ceremonial swearing in of our new police officer. Next, we'll presentation is the November election voting update. So, is that Candace or is that Candace?
Yep, I can take that. So, we are, as of today, exactly three weeks away from the November election. We're getting very close here. The, let's see, pull up my calendar here. Next Tuesday starts the in-person absentee voting and that is going to be in the council chambers, the second floor of the city hall. And that goes until the 30th of October, until Friday, the 30th. We are open from 8:00 AM to 4:30. With the exception of the 30th, we are open until 5:00. It just, we want to remind people to bring their driver's license or photo ID, passports, something that is, helps them to get their ballot. It's the same thing that you'd bring with you if you came to the polls. We are kind of still having that steady stream of absentee ballots being returned to City Hall. We are also having a few that are utilizing the Dropbox, both at City Hall as well as the new one that we have set up at the library. We met with university today and that is something we've secured. So, District 3 will be back at the university in the Allzvik Center and we kind of met with them to set up what would be a nice, safe election setup at the university. So, it'll look a little different than it has years before. We will be using different doors, but we will not have a lack of signage and will hopefully make it as easy as people, for people to navigate as possible. We will be able to enter in one door and exit another door. So, that's also nice instead of using the same door in and out. So, we are just working close with them to be able to get people trained and plenty enough workers because it does, with COVID, it takes a little bit more people as well as having a very large election to safely run the election. So, we are going to be working diligently on that, but that is something that we're looking forward to. And let's see.
Where were the other, the other voting?
Say that one more time.
Where's the other voting?
The other voting, so the other three districts are, they're still going to be at the Broski Center. So, we are keeping that. So, that's districts 1, 2, and 4. And so that would be a similar setup to as if you reported to the Armory in past years. So, you're just coming, going to the Legion Field, which is the Broski Center, and we are still offering the drive-through voting at the Broski Center. Unfortunately, we are not going to be offering the drive-through voting at District 3. We just don't have the manpower or preparation to be able to do that safely and effectively. So, we are just going to keep that indoor only. But we are working along with some other staff members that have helped in the past with the drive-through voting and my understanding, the August election went pretty well and that was the first time we'd used the Broski location. So, we want to continue to use that for any election moving forward. A couple deadlines to be aware of. The deadline to request an absentee ballot to be mailed is October 29th at 5:00 PM. That's a Thursday and that's the Thursday before the election. The deadline to return absentee ballots is, at this point, it is still November 3rd at 8:00 PM. So, that is the election day. We have to have them received back to us by the end of election day so that we can process them. I know that maybe some people may be wondering what's going on with different court orders, but as of right now, that is what we're being told is the original law is still standing to have them back on election day. If that should change, we will communicate that with the community, but at this point, that's what we're moving forward with. And absentee ballots can continue to be mailed to City Hall, dropped off in person. If you don't wish to send them through the mail, you can drop them off at the Dropbox and like I had mentioned before, one located at the, at the City Hall, outside of City Hall, and also one located at the library. Let's see.
And where is the one at the library?
The one at the library is located on the backside of the library or like the south side of the library. It's the same entrance as if you were going to go to the hotel or to the library there. It's right next to the book drop, as if you were returning a book after hours. It's, it's signed really well and so far, that's been working for us pretty good. Sorry, I'm only catching like every other word. I'm not sure why it's choppy, but.
Can you still register to vote?
Yes, you certainly can register to vote. The deadline to register online or through the mail is actually tomorrow, but I don't want people to be confused. So, the deadline that is tomorrow is just for registration only and it's online and mailing only. You can come to the clerk's office to register still. Just make sure you bring in the proper paperwork that you need to be able to do that, that is basically has, you know, like a water bill or a bank statement, credit card statement, a lease agreement, something like that that has your name and address that you are trying to register at. And we can also register you at the polls on election day. So, there's plenty of opportunity to still register. And then, like I'd mentioned before, the absentee ballot request is, the deadline is October 29th. I did notice at the April election that a lot of people got those dates kind of interchanged and they were thinking that tomorrow's the last day to get an absentee ballot. That's, that's not the deadline for the ballots, for absentee ballots tomorrow. It's just for the registration.
Hotline or mail-in registration?
Correct. So, you can still come to the city clerk's office and honestly, I kind of encourage people, if you are going to be making a trip to the city clerk's office to register anyways, unless you are really wanting to come to the polls on election day, I would encourage you just to wait until that timeline, timeline between October 20th and October 30th and you can register and vote at the city hall at that time.
Okay, unusual to ask questions during this kind of presentation, but I am going to go around and ask if anyone has questions. Jason, do you have questions? Candace?
I have, excuse me, I have no questions right now.
Okay, Kathy?
I don't have any questions of Candace. Barb, but your microphone is challenging. I hear maybe every third word.
Okay, I thought it was my, I thought it was my end.
All right, is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know. Okay, no questions of Candace from Kathy. Robin, any questions?
Oh, um, will there be signage at the Armory indicating the change in location?
Yes, we are aware that a lot of times people only will vote, they could be brand new to the community or they'll only, the last time that they did vote, maybe they reported to the Armory. So, yeah, we definitely want people to know that it's now at the Broski Center. And furthermore, not only is it just at the Broski Center, it's at the university as well because for the last two elections, we didn't have the university just because of COVID, trying to kind of minimize contact and stuff like that. But we want to sort of separate that back out just for the sheer numbers that we're going to have this election.
Great, thank you. The other question I had is, I had heard that some absentee ballots maybe had gone out with dates that were incorrect on them. Were you aware of that at all and photo confidence, I guess? How is that addressed?
Sure. So, it's not the date that was the issue and I was made aware of that as I returned to work. It was, at the top of it, it said partisan primary ballot instead of just the, you know, official ballot. And we didn't, a lot of people kind of felt like that made their ballot invalid. We definitely want to stress that that does not make the ballot invalid. We did have, we did get that corrected and we do have new ballots. If people want to come in and get a different ballot, they absolutely can, or they want to give us a call, we can send them a new ballot. But there's nothing wrong with that ballot. The state is aware of that typo and they've okayed us to still use the ballot. So, the contest and the names that are listed on the ballot itself, nothing is incorrect there. It's, it really just is that very first line, the title line on the top of the ballot. But thank you for asking.
Eileen, any questions?
No questions.
Isaac, any questions?
No questions.
Ken, any questions about voting?
No questions.
Okay, and I believe that ends our presentations for the evening.
Barb, I'm sorry. Is there still a need for more volunteers? I meant to ask that, too.
We are, we're still working on that. There may still be a need for volunteers. When we met with the university today, they indicated that they would have a number of people interested in helping out. So, I'm still trying to put some numbers together, especially now that we know that we've added the university. But hopefully, I hope to be able to let people know that very soon if we're still needing some. But I think at this point, we are doing okay. We've had a lot of new people come forward, which is, which is exciting. It's nice to have some new faces. So, we'll definitely be utilizing them.
Okay, I think then we're ready to move off of election voting update presentation into the public hearing. And tonight, we actually have three public hearings. The first public hearing is on Resolution 20-25, Adoption of Declaration of Emergency 2020. And so, Adam, would you please explain this particular resolution?
Yeah, so what this is, is the continuation of pretty much the declaration or state of emergency that the city has been enacting pretty much since March 17th was the first, the first declaration of emergency that we declared. And what happened from a timing standpoint is due to kind of where everything was falling with COVID, with executive orders and kind of determinations, we were not able to actually meet ahead of time in order to actually physically adopt a resolution. So, what was happening was as the emergency management director and city manager myself, I was creating that resolution in kind of working with council leadership as well as the clerk. And then that resolution then was being ratified after the fact by the council. But because our current declaration of emergency that we have expires on the 15th and as we're going to be later on talking about, you know, potentially ordinances or continuing resolutions, et cetera, the recommendation made by the city attorney was that this would be an opportunity for, instead of doing kind of the previous way where we would ratify it after the fact and then have the council do it, this just essentially is the extension of the declaration or state of emergency and allows the council to be the actual body that can adopt it tonight. So, again, this is one of those kind of COVID-19 procedures where, you know, there isn't kind of an information and discussion period and then it waits a while, it's a vote. The request would be to approve this tonight. And essentially, what this does is extends the declaration of emergency till the end of the year. And what that does is, as we talked about in the previous declarations, it gives kind of the city the flexibility if, you know, things were to get worse or there was particular issues that were occurring where, you know, we had to move buildings or we had to do something that we couldn't get the council in order to enact that. It does give the kind of city manager the authority to, to make those decisions. But obviously, as I've talked about, any of those decisions will not be done without obviously consultation with council leadership or if the ability is to actually bring it in front of the council. So, again, this is just kind of checking off one of those emergent, emergency management boxes that we need to do.
Okay, so we now have the staff presentation, which is also the applicant statement. Okay, for this particular resolution, I don't know, Jody, maybe you can help us out. People did not register in advance for this emergency declaration. This is really something that we've had as continuing resolution since March. It's not the face mask ordinance. It's basically emergency powers and those kinds of things. So, public statements in favor. I guess the only way I can take this, Jody and Adam, did you work that out? Do people use the reactions button and raise their hand or participant? Where is raising hand? Yes, if you go to your participants list and you want to speak on this particular issue, you would raise your hand. Now, we're not talking about a face mask ordinance at this point in time. We're talking about the adoption of a declaration of emergency resolution, which coincides with Adam being our emergency operation director, I guess, or he's in charge when we have emergencies, gives him the flexibility to call on others if and when things need to be done and between council meetings or, we've had these before, we've had this since March 17th and we've had these before during tornadoes, after tornadoes, we've had these. And we may have had them on other times. Okay, any, I am seeing no hands raised by anybody that I see to speak in favor of this declaration of emergency. So, now I will take public statements against. And again, there's a, under participants on your menu, there is a place where you can raise your hand. So, if you want to speak against this adoption of a declaration of emergency, please raise your hand. I see one hand raised. I believe that hand is Mike North. Am I correct?
That's correct, Barb.
Okay, so you're against?
I'm not so much against the declaration of emergency as much as I am some of the preludes to the actual declaration and the language that precedes it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public statements? Against? Okay, public statements in general. If you have a public statement in general, again, under participants, use the raise your hand button. Okay, I think I've gone through the list about three or four times now and I see nobody who wants to speak in general. So, now we're at council session and I will start that with Jason.
No comments right now?
Eileen?
No comment.
Robin?
No comment.
Isaac?
No comments.
Kathy?
I just have a comment. I believe it's a typo in the third paragraph where on page 10, it says whereas with our vaccine or more effective means, should that be without a vaccine?
I believe you're right. It should be without a vaccine or more effective means of treating.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's the only thing.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Ken, any comments on this?
No additions.
Okay, so, and I had no comments although I'm, I'm not sure that, I don't agree with Mike in saying that some of the wording, particularly wording about college and university students, I might take issue with, but I don't take issue with the resolution. I might take issue with some specifics, but I guess we're not actually adopting the specifics. We're adopting a resolution relative to, or yes, adoption, a declaration of emergency. So, at this point then, if there is no further discussion among council members, I would take a motion to close this public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Kathy. Close the public hearing from Resolution 20-25. Do I hear common council action?
Barb, I would move to approve Resolution Number 2025 Declaration of Emergency.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Killian to adopt Resolution 20-25, Adoption of Declaration of Emergency 2020. This will go through the end of the year. Candace, we will vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shanley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next public hearing is on an ordinance that would be a City of Platteville face covering ordinance. So, this is the second of three public hearings. So, Adam, can you work us through what you have here?
Yeah, so I think, you know, one of the first things that's important to do is probably start this conversation again by laying out kind of a quick timeline of how we got to this point or where we're at. So, in March, on March 12th of 2020, Governor Evers declared a public health emergency, which was then followed the next day on March 13th by President Donald Trump declaring the pandemic a national emergency. This then led through a couple of different phases where on March 13th, Governor Evers then ordered all schools to close by the middle of the following week. March 17th then kicked off the first official kind of city declaration of a state of emergency, which then on the same day covered where Governor Evers ordered bars and restaurants to close and bans gatherings of 10 or more people. On March 23rd, the governor then announced an order banning all non-essential travel and businesses. And then at the end of March on the 25th is when the Wisconsin, the Wisconsin Safer at Home Order went into effect. This then happened on April 28th then was again where we extended the state of emergency to deal with COVID-19. On May 13th, 2020, then the Wisconsin Supreme Court ruled that the secretary-designee failed to follow emergency rules procedures and exceeded her authority, which then caused the Safer at Home Order to no longer be in effect. This then had the city then on May 18th extend the Safer at Home Emergency for 60 days and then started our kind of pioneering through COVID-19 where we had specific procedures put in place to when city buildings would reopen, which happened through the months of June, kind of July and into July. On August 1st, 2020, then Governor Evers issued emergency order number one requiring face coverings in certain situations. And then on August 25th, the Common Council adopted Resolution 20-23, which strongly urged the wearing of face coverings in Platteville and requiring the use of face coverings in all municipal buildings and outside properties owned by the city. September 22nd then is when the Governor, Governor Evers extended the statewide mask mandate until November 21st. And just yesterday, on October 12th, the St. Croix County Circuit Court Judge Michael Waterman ruled Monday that Evers did not overstep his authority by issuing multiple emergency orders on the coronavirus and therefore his emergency order and kind of face mandate is still in effect. is still in effect. The Wisconsin legislature does have the ability to kind of remove any emergency order via resolution if they choose, so that I know is something that kind of has been discussed. But just to kind of go over kind of some of the information, so again, I looked up, you know, before this meeting, Grant County Health Department issued as of 10/13/2020, they have indicated there are 1,478 individuals who have tested positive in Grant County for COVID-19, which represents about 2.9% of the Grant County population. There's been a total of 1,150 individuals who ever covered, so that's about 78%. And there has been 23 deaths of individuals, which is 0.04% of the population that have, been deceased due to COVID-19. UW Platteville obviously has been monitoring since the return of students, and as of today, they have had a total of 261 positive test results, with 215 of those coming from Student Health Services, 33 coming from external testing, and 13 that are related to employees. So obviously, COVID-19 and face coverings are a divided issue and one which has been, you know, highly politicized. And in preparing for this meeting, Communication Specialist Richards provided me with the following totals. We had asked individuals to indicate if they wanted to speak or if they wanted to either proxy in favor or against. And what we found is there were 39 individuals who were in favor of a mass ordinance but did not want to speak, and 40 individuals that were against a mass ordinance but did not want to speak. So obviously, with this sample size, you know, it's clear that this is a very, as we talked about, it's a divided issue with, you know, many differing opinions and many considerations. So my role obviously as the city manager is to remain neutral in matters of division and obviously especially which become political in nature, and to present both sides of the equation for council consideration. So the common council and staff have received from a variety of residents written in vocal stances regarding this issue. The council has heard and received a petition from residents and citizens who are asking for the city to do everything it can to protect them by requiring a face covering. The council has received support from the University of Platteville, the University of Platteville Student Senate, and Resident Hall Association in favor of the city adopting a temporary mass ordinance. And then the council has also received notification and heard from residents and citizens who are asking for the city to not adopt a face covering ordinance. The notifications have discussed concerns about how ordinances will be enforced, health concerns which prevent people from wearing masks or have increased problems by wearing one, whether the city is overstepping its authority that this decision should be left up to individuals and not mandated by a municipality, and the potential economic impact such an ordinance would have on businesses who can continue to struggle with staying open. So city staff has obviously fielded a variety of questions from residents and business owners about what would happen if the face covering mandate was overturned. And that would be basically right now by the legislature. So the legislature would have to come into session and act via resolution to overturn the order. If that would occur, you know, under the resolution which was adopted on August 25th, municipal-owned buildings and property would remain under the requirement for individuals to use a face covering unless they fall into the Center of Disease Control and Prevention exception guidelines. The common council again would continue to urge retail stores, bars, restaurants, entertainment venues, public meeting spaces, governmental buildings, civic centers, outdoor areas open to the public where 10 or more people are gathered and unable to maintain six feet or more of distance between people not from the same household and public transportation services to have their patrons wear a face covering. So what's in front of kind of the council and obviously the public tonight is to consider whether they would like to move forward with the creation of a face covering ordinance. City staff has obviously researched and found there are a couple of other municipalities that have created a form of either resolution or ordinance requiring face masks. And as we've talked about in the past, those are on the gamut from Dan County to Madison, Whitewater, Green Bay, Milwaukee are a couple. Our city attorney obviously recommended before considering vote on adoption of any type of face covering ordinance that the council should adopt the declaration of emergency, which you have done. So what you have in front of you are essentially two ordinances. One of them, and they both would be temporary ordinances that would be determined by the council at which time to remove from our, you know, municipal code. The two ordinances, one is specifically designed with verbiage that has been utilized obviously by other municipalities and takes into account our own considerations of definitions and as well as our municipal enforcement. The second option is one that essentially mirrors the information that is in the governor's mask mandate or face covering mandate, but then applies our own municipal ability to enforce it, so has our municipal rules. How enforcement of this ordinance would work would be the police department would obviously issue a warning for first offenses, and then show only issue with citation for first offenses if an individual refused to comply with the ordinance after receiving a warning or for a second and subsequent offense. Any person violating this ordinance shall upon conviction forfeit not less than $10 and not more than $40 for a first offense, and not less than $50 and not more than 150 for a second and subsequent offense. Each violation shall be considered a separate offense. So obviously, there's been talking or questions about, you know, would there be any budget or fiscal, you know, impact? And the potential budget or fiscal impact for the creation of a face covering ordinance would be any legal challenge regarding the enforcement or legal standing to create such an ordinance. Due to the lack of known case law, you know, there really isn't a lot of case law out there or history about pandemics and municipalities making ordinances. You know, there's been some, some kind of mixed conversation, but in talking with our attorney and we're talking with the League of Municipalities, they have both expressed their opinion that a municipality does have the authority under Wisconsin statute 323-14, which governs local government powers and duties during a declared emergency, local governments have the general authority to order by ordinance or resolution whatever is necessary and expedient for the health, safety, protection, and welfare of persons and property within the local unit of government in an emergency. So obviously, the city does budget for, you know, legal fees, but does not take into account, you know, possibly a challenge in regards to pandemics or anything along those lines. So obviously, city staff is looking kind of for guidance from the council on how you would like to proceed, whether it would be, you know, the council should consider whether they want to continue with only the resolution or move forward with the adoption of one of these temporary municipal ordinances. Obviously, as this is a public hearing, we've had a number of kind of individuals that would like to weigh in on concerns and questions that they have. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay. Before I go farther, that would be the staff presentation and applicant statement. I will ask council members first if they have questions of Adam. Jason, any questions for Adam?
Um, the only question would be, and maybe we'll, maybe we'll discuss this a little bit later, but now since the governor's order has been extended, you know, I'm wondering like, does the city have to put in an ordinance? Or is it just that we're going to, you know, obviously follow the state mandate? So I guess that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Okay. Eileen, do you have any specific questions on Adam's presentation?
No specific question, no.
Okay, Robin, any specific questions on Adam's presentation?
Not on Adam's presentation. I guess I'd like to ask the police department at some point if there's been issues or their feelings about enforcement, but I don't know when that is appropriate.
We'll be on number six, council discussion. Right now, we're just, we're just answering clarification questions, council members of Adam's presentation. Isaac?
No questions for Adam?
Kathy?
Um, yeah, a question. In both of the ordinances, they're temporary. What is the magic date of December 31st? What ties, ties this ordinance to that date?
Typically, that's just the end of the year. So in talking with the attorney, that's been the recommendation that's kind of gone by other municipalities is they have it till the end of the year unless extended or terminated by the common council. So depending on kind of where things are at, the council will have the opportunity if this were put into effect to decide if they want to extend it or if at that point in time, there's been, you know, something that has changed, either, you know, there's improvement or something else that would no longer require the ordinance to be in effect.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ken, any specific questions of Adam on his presentation?
Can't hear you.
Any specific questions of Adam on his presentation?
I have a question about the university information. Did you get that? It's about, it says city mask mandate resolution. Is that a pattern after one of these two? And so which one?
Yes, so that was patterned off of the first one. So what that was is the student senate and then also the Resident Hall Association was able to see the draft versions that we have specifically related to our own municipal ordinance, and that is primarily the one that they used to draft their approval.
I had a question about face covering. And this is in section one, and it's section 1B. And I asked the question because this has come up as a very common mask, and this is, it talks about masks with vents are not acceptable. And so, and mask N95, do you know if those are acceptable? Because I've used those or some people using those, they, some of those masks have vents. So anybody answer that question?
I can't answer that question, Ken. But if it's, generally speaking, the N95 masks, which are the ones that are distributed to hospitals, are the ones that have been acceptable. Ryan, perhaps you have any answer to that?
An N95 mask with the exhale valve on it will protect the wearer, but it will not protect those around them. Because it does not stop you from exhaling out in the open all year.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Well, that's why a mask with vent is not seen as an appropriate face covering. Okay.
We were first talking about N95 masks, so those are accepted, taken out now.
Okay. There were a number, so now we go to the public hearing part of this, which is first of all, public statements in favor. Now, we had no one registered this time to actually speak tonight in favor. But if you are here and wish to speak in favor, then you go to your menu under participants and you do the raise hand. And we will look through and see if anyone's hand is raised. In the meantime, I will, Jody, I want the names of all of the people who registered in favor, which were some 39, is that correct? Jo, Jody?
Yes, that's correct, Barb.
Okay, I want those 39 names. I'd actually like them read tonight, but I can't read them because I can't look at all of this stuff at the same time. But I definitely believe that those names should be included in the record of tonight's meeting. Jody, if you can read them quickly, as I look to see if anybody's wanting to speak in favor, we'll go ahead.
I can pull that up.
Can somebody read them quickly?
Yep, I can read them here. So we have Victoria Snyder, 25 Maple Drive.
You don't have to read the addresses, just read.
Okay. Victoria Snyder, Robert Snyder, Lydia Horn, Ashley Snyder, Reverend Matthew Seanberg, Kayla Murphy, Robert W. Gates, Carla S. Holloway, Elizabeth Gates, Stephen Joseph Holloway, Angie Wright, Brooke Gassman, Joyce Evelyn, Jeff Iverson, Orin Horner, Kay Horner, Tyler Schmidt, Tom Osteen, Mary Kay Hoppenjan, Hannah Dreckman, Deborah Osteen, Mary Miller, Lynn Myers, Marge Stuckler, William L. Kramer, Mary Lou Jones, David D. Jones, Michael A. Knouts, Sheila Stephens, Jacqueline Verholic, Rebecca Purgar, Sarah Malin, Jonah Rundy, Dale Magnuson, Luke Dreckman, Tony McFall, Rosa Moore, Carla Tully, and Erica Vanasak. And I apologize if I butchered anybody's name.
Okay. I just think it's important that those names be mentioned. Those people didn't take the opportunity to register, and so I think it's important that we measure. So I have looked through the list several times, and I see no one's hand has been raised to speak in favor. There are five people who have registered in advance to speak against. And so I will call on those people. And then if you are not one of the people who registered in advance to speak against the face covering ordinance, you may also use the raise hand icon that's on the, I'm sorry. I understand my mic is fading again, that's because I'm looking in a different direction. I'm looking at a different piece of paper. I guess I have to watch that.
Excuse me, Barb?
Yes.
Can I vote for the mask?
Uh, this is Ellen Stuckler.
Yes, it is.
Did you hear my question about, is there no way you could have raised your hand?
No, I'm on the phone.
Okay. All right, Ellen, you want to speak in favor of the mask covering?
Yes, I'm in favor with the mask covering.
Okay. Is that, have you read, is that what you wanted to say?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Please register that, Jody. I don't think she was in our original list. Okay, now we're again going to public statements against the face mask ordinance. And the first person I have on the list of pre-registered is Mike North, 2137 Pine Grove Road, Platteville, who owns and operates a business at 10 Keystone Parkway. So Mike?
Barb, before I make any comments, I'd like to ask a question first. In the draft packet that was sent out, there were two proposed ordinances that were put forward. I would like to know which one we're actually talking about because the language in each is different.
You're right. And so, Adam, the language in the first of the two that were sent out, I don't know how to designate them otherwise, is language that Adam has assembled from various other municipalities that have enacted mask ordinances. The second of that was, the second of the ordinances that was included for discussion is specifically the language from the governor's current mask mandate. It's basically, I think, word for word, it doesn't refer to the one the governor put on, but it is the same specific language that the governor used. Adam, could you tell us the substantial difference between the two?
Yeah, so I guess option one, which would be the city-specific ordinance was created in conjunction with our municipal attorney essentially looking at other ordinances that were drafted. Specifically, for example, Whitewater has a ordinance that was drafted. Green Bay, you know, they specifically looked at the verbiage and language that was in those other ordinances and then created it using that verbiage and our municipal attorney's kind of interpretation of the statutes and guidelines, and then puts in our specific enforcement and penalty section based on our municipal citations. The ordinance B, which is essentially what our municipal The ordinance B, which is essentially what our municipal attorney did, was took the wording that is directly in the governor's order and put it into the majority of the whereas statements, the definitions, the exceptions. And the only difference in that one then is when you get to the enforcement section, it is our specific municipal enforcement. But otherwise, the verbiage and wording is exactly what is in the governor's order compared to the first version, which is our own interpretation based on kind of a, you know, review of multiple ordinances and resolutions that are out there.
Okay, Adam, is there a substantial difference between the two?
Specifically, yes, in the exception section. Ours is more linked where it says it falls into the Center of Disease Control, whereas in the governor's order, it has specific verbiage of, you know, while eating, while communicating. So there are some differences there. There are also some slight differences, my understanding, in what we describe as a face covering and also describing building area open to the public. Whereas the governor's order has some different verbiage. So those are specifically some of the differences that I am aware of. As well as within the whereas statements, there are some differences between what we have indicated on our own versus what specifically was in the governor's whereas statements.
Going back to you now, we're, the consideration right now is whether we should have mask ordinance. And then the further consideration would be whether it should be either of these two or if neither is acceptable. So I guess that's what I would say about that. If we should have a mask ordinance, then if either of these is acceptable, if neither is acceptable, then what would be? Is that helpful?
You were breaking up quite a bit, Barb. Were you addressing me? This is Mike North.
Yes?
I caught about every fifth word, so I, I'm not sure what you were saying.
All right, let me try again. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the issue tonight is whether or not we should have ordinance about face masks. Then the second question would be, if we do, should it be one of these two? And if not, then what should it be? So right now, I think we're just talking about, should we have a face mask ordinance in general?
Okay, so if this is my time to talk, I guess the reality of those two separate ordinances that are scripted as 20-xX, they both have very different language that since we're talking about punitive effects, bring with it very different outcomes. One of which says that you must wear a mask if you are in a space. Doesn't say if it's a public building. It says a space occupied by someone outside of your household. The other one points towards more of a business-related orientation. And the reality of both is that, since this is a punitive ordinance, we need to understand why we would want to bring that upon our citizenry. Reality is, the genesis of this discussion came forward in last, in the last meeting as an issue with our local businesses. And I, I still want to call him Dr. Killian because he was my, one of my professors. But he made an incredible point. He said, "I thought that the, the free hand of, 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 of a market environment would have solved this problem. And I will tell you, as a business owner in this town, the free hand will solve this problem." Several people whom I witnessed speak on the last meeting who made it very clear that it was hard for them to go out in public, I have seen in public inside of businesses wearing a mask. And the beauty of this particular moment is that the state already has a mask ordinance in place. It already is in effect. We do not need to go above and beyond to draft one for our own, for our own community. Yes, there are five other municipalities in the state that have a face mask covering requirement. The other 600 municipalities do not. And the reality is that Platteville does not need to be among those few drafting an ordinance that's already in place at a statewide level when in fact, the issue is clearly, as it's drafted in the spa, in, in this language, in public buildings. In the prelude to your own emergency resolution, you talk about the fact that face coverings, along with a vaccine, are the only thing we have in order to protect our people. That is not true. The reality is people can make a decision for themselves and their family as to whether they want to put themselves in harm's way by going into a public space. That's their choice, and we need to leave it that way. The state ordinance clearly goes far enough, as we saw in the language that you put forward, to cover any and all places in our cities, in, in our city as it relates to face masks. We do not need a mask ordinance in our own town to go beyond what already exists. All I've got to say.
Thanks, Mike. We have a second, folks who have registered to speak. Silas and Rebecca Langloy. Are they on?
Yeah, this is Rebecca Langloy.
Okay. Rebecca?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not for the mask ordinance. And the reason is, I think that it should be each business's choice what they want to reinforce. Just like it's our choice, the people who shop in Platteville, to choose where we want to give our business to. Why not let each business decide if they want to reinforce masks, which involves calling the police for those who refuse to wear them? Have businesses put some sort of marker outside their building? That way, people who want to, who want to shop at required mask stores can shop at them and feel safer. And on the other hand, let's let businesses who don't want to require a mask not have to. Then each of us can shop at the places we want to support, and Platteville will be a more peaceful town. Also, what about restaurants? If you're serious about reinforcing masks, a mask that makes no sense to allow dine and eating, which means restaurants will lose the business they need to pull through, even in this already hard time. I've heard from quite a few families that if this mask ordinance is passed, they'll be going elsewhere to do their shopping. Please think about this while you're making your decision. What is really best for Platteville? Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Rebecca. Is Silas also speaking, or is it just Rebecca?
Just me right now.
Okay. Dan Borgen?
Hey, yep, thank you. So I own a small business, I own a small business in town. And let me just start by saying that I do think wearing masks can help. And I think it's the right of the business to require them if they believe that's the best way to protect their employees and their customers. And I will wear one to the business if they ask. However, what I've personally seen could be described as an over-reliance on masks and less of a reliance on social distancing, hand washing, healthy eating, and other measures to prevent and minimize the effects of COVID. For example, when I go to Walmart, there are people everywhere, certainly not six feet apart. Whereas when all this started, they were much more careful. I believe that masks can give a false sense of security. And while they certainly help, they're not bulletproof. And in fact, masks could potentially do more damage than good if, as a whole, we do less social distancing and other measures than we otherwise would because we have a false sense of security. In addition, while COVID also has potential long-term effects, there may very well be long-term effects from wearing masks. Let's face it, many of us don't wash our masks as often as we should. And then we stick the mask back on our face after it's been growing bacteria on it. And it's a nice, warm, moist area for bacteria to grow faster. I've had people close to me already complaining about skin problems directly where the mask was worn. And I've seen reports of nurses and doctors having potential skin problems from the masks. Who knows if, long-term, there would be something more serious. At the end of the day, I believe it's the right of the business to protect the people in their business the way they feel is right. In addition, some businesses are, for the most part, able to maintain social distancing within their business due to having cubicles or desks far enough away. All of that to say, I don't think a sweeping ordinance forcing a business to do something they don't need to do or feel that they shouldn't do is the right approach. Because of that, a one-size-fits-all ordinance doesn't feel like the best way to handle it. You could always consider a smaller ordinance only for the businesses that would like to participate, which would be different than the current system because it could be enforced.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Ethan Omen has registered against face covering ordinance. Ethan Omen. Ethan, are you with us? Ethan? Okay, he registered to speak but doesn't appear to be here. The last person who registered in advance to speak is Jane Leidy. Jane, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
So, I had some thoughts. I think Dan made a good point with just letting each business decide for themselves. And Mike had a good point about it too. And I, I don't know why Platteville feels the need to overrule what the state has already put into effect. The CDC, if masks are recommended for the general public, the decision-makers should. There's a lot of things you need to do. You need to train people on how to wear and when and how and to use these masks and how to dispose of them. And we don't have disposal sites, and they're going all over town as it is. And then the, oh, what else? And then you're also responsible for gathering scientific data and evidence on the effectiveness of the masks and to continue to evaluate that. So, this is from the CDC, what you're supposed to do if you're going to do it. And my concerns are, again, the face problems, headaches, breathing difficulties, the bullying of people for those that cannot wear a mask. And the false sense of security is a big one. I see so many people, they're reaching inside their masks and then they're touching all kinds of things. It's, I, and especially going in a restaurant. You walk in with your mask on, you sanitize your hands, walk to your table, pull off your grimy, dirty mask, and most people set it on the table. You're dining, and then you might have to go to the bathroom, put your dirty mask on, and then walk to the bathroom. Then you wash your hands and go back to your table. But then you take your dirty mask off again, and your hands are getting contaminated every time. And so those, those kinds of things really bother me. And there was an interesting study. This is back when the pagans were the majority of the population. And there was a plague that went around, a couple plagues thought to be related to smallpox. And the pagans basically fled and isolated themselves. Whereas the Christians found they could help the sick by feeding them and taking care of them. And the Christians actually developed higher levels of immunity. And they survived, and Christianity flourished, which I just found that kind of interesting. And history does tend to repeat itself. So I, I think that if you have a health issue, you make your own judgment on how much you'd go out and wear a mask. And the other ones, I just, I don't see why we want to go ahead and make another ordinance, potentially even subjecting the city to litigation and being reckless with my tax money. Thank you.
Those are all of the people that I have registered in advance to speak against a face covering ordinance. If you wish to speak, you may put up your hand by going to the menu under participants and using the raise hand button. So I will give just a few seconds here for people who may still want to speak. Gary, you have raised your hand to speak against the face covering. So Gary?
Yes, I'm not against it, I'm for it. I couldn't find where the hand raising was. But anyway, as Platteville's being one of the top 10 high air hotspots in Wisconsin, I think something should be done, and I'm for a mask ordinance. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, again, we're taking public statements against the face covering ordinance. Go to the participants area on your menu. And in the bottom of the box for participants, there's invite, mute me, and raise hand if you would like to speak. This is the time to raise your hand.
Barb, do you want me to read the names of those that?
I do want you to read the names of those who have registered against a face covering ordinance.
How many of those would there be?
About 40. One's 39 and one's 40. So they were basically the same number.
Yeah, so we've got registering against face covering ordinance, Elizabeth Sour, Corey O'Donnell, Silas Langloy, Rebecca Langloy, Monique Borgen, Dan Borgen, Lucinda Champion, Steve Loeb, Laurel, it's like Laura Byerman, Mike North, Jennifer North, Heidi Pulver, Brittany O'Connell, Nico Gladys, Beth Gladys, Christine Johnson, John D. Mackey, Todd Brandemule, Amy Brandemule, Craig McCaw, Trevor Bone, Molly Bone, Amanda Johns, Johnson, Micah Johnson, Alyssa Hare, Heather Hanson, Sarah Johnson, Uriah Johnson, Elliot Harrington, Sean Morgan, Courtney Miguel, Christopher Hines, Elaine Harkness, Ethan Omen, Christine Johnson, Jesse Rui, Jane Leidy, Kevin Leidy, Beth Ruck, and Amanda Whedon.
And that's our tonight's meeting, our meeting notes. I have had one person raise their hand. That comes from Stephanie Becker or Mike Osterholtz, who's ever there that's going to speak.
Yeah, we just wanted to register against it, that's all.
I can, Stephanie and I registered against.
Okay.
All of the, all of the hands that I see up. So, we will move on then from public statements against the public statements in general. And we did have one person who asked to give a general statement about face coverings. That would be Edward Mumbey, M-U-M-B-Y. I don't see Edward on the call, but that might be that he's on a phone. Edward? Okay, folks, we gave everybody a chance to talk tonight. Now it's time for council discussion. So we will start around for council discussion. Should there be an ordinance? And if so, should it be one of these? Jason, questions, comments, discussion?
So my question is, um, so I want to say, and somebody can clarify this, but I want to say that we put together this ordinance and we're talking about it because it was in anticipation that the state order was going to expire. But now it's re, it got renewed. So I, at this point, you know, I, I guess I'm not, if there is a state ordinance or a state mandate, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about the city having an additional ordinance. And I would rather see us operate like we had been. I'd like to, if for whatever reason, the, the state mandate would get overturned, I would want to have an option and I would want to be able to have a way to, to try to implement something from a, from a city standpoint. But I, I guess right now, with the state mandate standing, I would rather just have something on hold in case something would change.
Elaine, your, your turn.
I'm sorry, Barbie breaking up again, but I assume you called on me? Yes? Okay. I echo Jason, actually. I believe in face masks, but I believe that the state face covering ordinance should be the one that is followed. And I don't think for that reason that we need to have an additional one for our city. I think that the governor's declaration or proclamation expires on November 21st, if I remember correctly, unless a court overrules sooner than that or the legislature. And I believe our second meeting is the 24th of November. So, I would echo Jason. I would rather maintain our stance using the governor's ordinance. And then if we want to discuss it again on the 24th, we could do that, of November.
Okay. Robin, your turn.
I would echo the previous statements. There's a lot of comments out there. Why is the city trying to overstep or do more than what the state is doing? And things would look very different had the ruling gone differently earlier this week. So, I feel like we're doing the responsible thing and having this public forum. But I too am comfortable waiting, having this ready, and not having the procedural steps in our way when it comes time, if we feel the need to pass it. I kind of just want to emphasize that the numbers that we see out there for recovered don't mean that those individuals are free of symptoms. They may still be struggling with the illness. I just want to reiterate, it is a pretty small measure to help others in your community to wear a mask. I know there's a lot of controversy about if it's going to cause harm to you. And in that sense, I would exercise your right and limit how often you're in places where you have to wear masks. But we do need to protect the public and the volume of individuals that need to use our healthcare services. So, I appreciate cooperation, compliance. I'd also like to put a little shout out note to the editorial by Dr. White. I had asked his direct feedback on the idea of us passing an ordinance. And he put that editorial in the paper that I think addressed it quite nicely. So, I think that is all I have for now.
Thank you, Robin. Isaac?
I'll go with partially of what the previous members have said here and expand on there. So, I do believe that we'd be fine, even if the court case would have got turned down to a different direction than what it did yesterday. I think the city of Platteville would have been fine with the resolution instead of doing an ordinance as has been proposed here. And a couple reasons being is what some of the people have stayed before is that I'm in favor of letting the businesses decide whether they'd like to have a mask or people wear a mask in their business or not. And also the people themselves can choose whether they'd like to go to a business that requires face coverings and it were than themselves. Also, both drafts, and I have one on two monitors here, each of them, they have so many exceptions to the drafts up here that if we were to pull a police officer away from doing something else or you got a call, I see about four or five things in each one of these drafts that one person would just have to state that is a reason why they're not wearing a mask. And we basically just, in my opinion, waste that police officer's time because they could be doing something else that is needed. Also, the other portion is the enforcement when this goes on here. So, if we do write out a ticket eventually, goes up to the court, you know, who gets that money? Is that going to be a Platteville that gets that, or is that going to be Grant County that gets that, or the state? The other thing is the one gentleman stated that the one size fits all. This is not an ordinance that fits everybody. One business it may, and the other one it's not. Some people we talked about with their businesses, a mask in their business would be terrible, a terrible thing. So, but at the end of the day, in short, either way, what the state has, they do have an ordinance right now or a mandate. You know, that's one thing. For us to go any farther and in depth beyond that, I don't think is the right thing to do. So, that's it.
Okay, Kathy?
Okay, I agree with almost everything that everyone has said, council members. But in particular, I have talked to some businesses and individuals who shared the concern that they have people that work in those businesses that cannot wear the masks. So, they, they're concerned for their employees. And then I think somebody, somebody made the comment about the term was bullying. And I have talked to several people, I know I brought it up before, that people have approached me being concerned that they are not physically able to wear them. They did not want to be tagged for that and have to explain why they couldn't. And I totally agree that I do not want to see Platteville have something tougher than the state does. We, the, I see, understand that a lot more of the urban areas have, have some different issues. While we're the largest community in southwest Wisconsin, it's still very rural. And I would like to think that people here are concerned about other people enough to do the right thing, to wear the mask, social distance. I know that, I also want to make a statement. I understand that COVID-19 is very serious. So, my message is, you know, to follow the CDC guidelines, do the best you can. But I, I really do not want to see the city enact an official ordinance to that effect. I'm quite comfortable with, with falling in line with the, what's at a state level currently.
Thank you, Kathy. Ken, it's your turn.
Okay. First thing is, since last time, Wisconsin is setting a record as far as the number of cases of the virus. And the question is, how are we going to decrease the number of cases of the virus occurring? And this is one of the things that can help as far as wearing a mask. And I believe we should hold the, these ordinances in reserve. And I asked the question, I believe, last time, that how long does it take to pass an ordinance and get it into effect? I believe the city manager was going to give an answer on that.
Adam?
I did talk to the municipal attorney, and since now we have had a public hearing, and these ordinances obviously have been out to the public for review. If at a point in time, you know, the council would deem that they would want to take action on one of these, they would then be able to hold a special meeting and pass that ordinance. And then the requirement would be then that we would be obligated to make sure we disseminate that information publicly to, you know, the public by publishing it in the journal, whatever the finalized ordinance is. But since now, there's been the, you know, he did indicate because of the kind of emergency situation, you don't technically have to have a public hearing, but I think we all agreed it was important to definitely have this out in the open, there's no reason not to, to get both sides and kind of the further discussion. But going forward, if the council would deem that they would want to enact one of these ordinances or, you know, change verbiage in the ordinance, they would be able to do so. And then the requirement would just be whatever is formalized and finalized would need to be published.
Okay, which might mean a week or two?
Yes, essentially about a week.
So, my basic issue is that the numbers have increased. And how are we going to decrease those numbers? If we leave it up to people making their decision and some are willing to wear a mask and some are not willing to wear a mask and some can't wear a mask, we're not, we're not doing a good job as far as controlling the numbers. And to keep it as this free will too long, and this of course also has become very political, this is not helping this situation whatsoever. I think that's all I want to say now.
Okay, so I guess I'm the last one. I'll say, first of all, I applaud everybody who's written and who's registered, whether you're for or whether you're against. It's very obvious that this is a very, almost a 50/50 proposition. I don't believe that this council would ever want to, would, would ever do anything on purpose to hurt people in this community. And so, there have been some messages that perhaps were less toward the issue and more toward an attack. Let's keep this at a level of masks or no masks. And we all have our opinion. And it's pretty obvious that it's a 50/50 opinion. I'm good with the governor's mandate. And so, I also agree that there is no, and I believe I stated that the last time, I don't believe there's reason for us to take action. The state has taken action. So, in that regard, I, it's good that we have these in our in the public eye. But at this point, I'm very comfortable with what is in place. So, is there any council member that still has anything to say? Jason?
Um, nothing further right now.
Eileen?
Nothing to add.
Robin?
I'm wondering if Doug wants to make any sort of statement, one way or the other. I'm okay with him passing. I just feel like there's a lot of talk out there about whether it would be burdensome to law enforcement to enact an ordinance that includes fines.
Doug, would you like to say anything, or are you?
I'm fine letting the council action as it appears it's going to play out.
Okay. Isaac, anything else?
Nothing to add.
Kathy, anything else?
Nothing to add.
Ken, anything else?
No.
Okay, I believe we're at the end of this public hearing. So, I would take a motion for this public hearing to close it.
We closed the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ken, second by Jason, to close the public hearing. Candace will vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Janley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now, there is to be council action in terms of, I assume, adoption. This would be the time for council action. If there is no action, then I guess there is no motion. Is that correct, Adam?
Yes, so that's one option. Otherwise, if the council decides, they can table this until a later date to be brought back as an action. I think that's an option as well. So, you could make a motion saying, you know, if you want, you could table, you know, these ordinances until such time that they would be, you know, required to be adopted.
So, either a motion to adopt, a motion to table, or perhaps no motion at all.
Well, I'll move a motion. I move that we table the two face mask ordinances to an appropriate later date.
Okay, there's a motion to table.
Until an appropriate later date.
We do need a motion, a second for a tabling motion, right?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table these ordinances until maybe some future date. Okay, Candace will vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Janley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, folks, thank you. We're on to our third public hearing. And tonight, the third public hearing is code amendments to Chapter 22, which is the zoning ordinance. So, Joe, you'll speak for us.
Yes. So, this is a project that we've been working on for quite some time. Steph has been working with the Plan Commission on a variety of amendments to the zoning ordinance. Just to back up for some people that may not have been taking part in some of the earlier discussions, but just hit the highlights on where these amendments came from as far as the impetus to consider these changes. There are a couple of key items and then some minor ones that kind of popped in as we're going through the process. But back in 2019, we did the housing study and needs analysis. And that document came up with some recommendations as far as what the city could do to address some of the housing issues in the community. And some of those were code-related, so we incorporated those recommendations into these changes. There's some language changes regarding home occupations. That kind of was a discussion that came forward from previous action at the council regarding some home occupations, specifically the dog kennel issue, where the language now doesn't provide any options for home occupations to have an outdoor component. So, we took a look at that as a potential change. There's a variety of changes that came through that were based on changes to state of Wisconsin law. The big part of it was the conditional use permits. They had a major rewrite of what we had to do to comply with state law. And then there were some smaller ones that kind of popped up through as I was going through some code update documents that were provided through the state, the local municipalities, et cetera. There were some changes that came through that they were also incorporated into that. There's a variety of changes, I kind of, they, to me, they fall under a kind of a housekeeping ordinance. When we have, the way our ordinance is written now, there, unfortunately, there's some conflicts, discrepancies between different divisions or different districts, excuse me, within the ordinance. So, because they kind of reference one district to another, and it led to some problems. So, we changed how it was written to itemize each use specifically in each district instead of referring to other districts. And actually, that resulted in a lot of, when you look through the document, see the red line, it looks like a whole lot of changes, but really, it's just how it's written. Some terminology changes to get some consistency. For instance, daycare, childcare centers instead of children's nurseries. And that's, different terms were used throughout, so we tried to make some consistency. Same with financial institutions instead of banks and savings loans and so forth. So, that's kind of the large overview, I would say. This was on the agenda for several meetings for discussion. And at the last meeting on September 8th, there were some comments that were made. And I did make some changes to the ordinance based on that previous discussion. So, the document in front of you has been changed since that meeting. And the changes specifically that were made since then, Section 22053C, was just correcting a typo, child was spelled wrong, 2211G3. This came up, just happens, but they have, since the last meeting, the way our ordinance was written regarding signage, we were missing a reference to a minimum setback for freestanding signs in the B1 district. It's consistent through all the other districts that there's kind of a minimum five-foot setback for freestanding signs. For whatever reason, this was not included in the B1 district. I think it probably goes back to whenever that ordinance was adopted back in the 90s, I believe. So, we did correct that error, 2206B3 and B4. There was a comment made about global signage in, for home occupation. So, I modified that, so hopefully, it's a little bit more clear. I think it was a little confusing. I think it was a little confusing. And also some changes to the home occupation language regarding vehicles. And so basically, as it says now, is that business vehicles for home occupations, if they're just a standard auto or light truck, that they're allowed. But a commercial vehicle, you know, a larger vehicle that would actually require a commercial driver's license to operate, et cetera, that would specifically have to be identified as part of, during the application process, if they come in for a conditional use permit or home occupation, and that would have to specifically be approved as part of that action before it could be allowed. And then we did a follow-up. Again, I mentioned the kennel issue way back in the beginning, kind of started part of this process. So the Plan Commission just recently went through and added in all the zoning districts language to where a dog kennel, private kennel, a business kennel, and a, an animal grooming businesses are allowed where they're conditionally used. And obviously, if they're not included, that means they're not allowed in that district. So that's the summary of all the changes. As you are well aware from previous meetings, there are quite a few changes throughout the document. So I didn't plan on going through it section by section again, but I would be glad to take any questions that anybody may have.
Okay, Isaac, I'm going to start with you because you're also on the Plan Commission. So if there's any further clarifications you want to make or questions you have.
I believe so, Barbara. I think, you know, we spent a lot of time in this, at the, actually, in this, in the council as well as in the planning development. I can think of, I'll just say months, as in plural, the amount of times that we have spent on this. So I'm just, no more questions, that's comments.
Okay, then we'll go to Jason. Any questions, comments of Joe?
Um, nothing right now.
Eileen?
No, as Isaac noted, we've spent quite a bit of time on this and had the opportunity to ask a lot of questions and got good answers. So I think we
Nothing right now. Robin?
Likewise.
Kathy?
Nothing further. Good job with all the changes. So a lot of hard work.
Ken?
No additions at this time.
Okay, since this is a public hearing now, I'm going to take public statements in favor. Now, no one has registered in advance for this. So if you are in favor of these code amendments for Chapter 22, please raise your hand by going to the participants area on the menu and using the raise hand. Making a couple of tours through here, I see no hands raised to speak in favor of this. So I will move on then to public statements against the changes to Chapter 22. If you are against this, please raise your hand. And now I am going to ask for any public statements in general on this. If you have a statement you want to make about Chapter 22, now is the time to raise your hand. Here's, we have no public comments for, against, or in general. So we're to the council discussion part of this. So I will make the round one more time. Any discussion, Jason?
Um, no discussion at this time.
Eileen?
Nothing to add.
Robin?
Nope.
Isaac?
None.
Kathy?
Nothing to add.
Ken?
No.
And I have nothing to add. I'm on the Plan Commission. I echo Isaac and Joe. We've been at this probably almost like, it seems like half a year. So I would take a motion and to close the public hearing.
So vote.
I second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Kathy to close the public hearing. Candace will vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, then this is the portion of the public hearing where the council may take action. So I might entertain, if there is a motion, to approve this.
I make a motion. Move to, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Isaac. I make the motion to approve the amendments to the Chapter 22 zoning as identified in the attached document.
And Jason will take you as the second, okay?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Isaac and a second by Jason to approve the amendments to Chapter 22 as presented. Candace will vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Well, thanks, folks. I don't know if we've ever had three public hearings in one meeting. All right, let us move on now to, to the fifth thing on our agenda tonight, which is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. Please indicate if you would prefer separate discussion and action on any of these. First, we have council minutes from September. We have payment of bills. We have the financial report for September. We have appointments to boards and commissions. And tonight, I have two appointments. One is Erin Ime to the Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee. One is Bill Holder to the Water and Sewer Commission. And I'm sorry, I have three, but the third is Doug Duplis to the Airport Commission. So Erin Ime to the Parks Recreation and Forestry, Bill Holder to Water and Sewer, and Doug Duplis to the Airport Commission. That, we also have licenses, one and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol as were identified in your packet. What's your pleasure on the consent calendar?
I would move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Motion by Eileen, second by Kathy to approve the consent calendar. Candace will vote. Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next portion of our agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I have received no information that anyone wants to talk during this section. I've had people request to talk further down on the agenda, but not on, at this section. Jody, have you had any requests? Adam?
I have a comment.
Okay, Ken?
Got this from a citizen today. Citizen was asking about the damage to a building on Second Street. I assume that's Joe Carroll's department. Has that been taken care of as far as preventing injury to people because of falling materials? I shouldn't have been the building inspector.
Well, at this point, I'd say the, the building inspector has been in contact with the property owner. He does have a contractor scheduled to do the repairs. Unfortunately, the contractor is busy and it's going to take a while. So as a result, the city did put up barricades to block the public sidewalk in front of that building. And those will remain in place until the building is secured.
Is the material belted up there? Is it hooked on securely?
So the, the contractor did provide some strapping, connecting the metal that is, has come loose to reinforce it. So it's not going to fall on its own, but we did have some concerns in a height, another high wind event, whether that would be adequate or not. So we did proceed with blocking the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, I've seen nobody raise their hand to speak. So that means, I believe, we'll go on to the reports, boards, commissions, and committees. The first of those is Parks Recreation, Parks Forest and Recreation. Jason?
Um, nothing to add to the report?
How about community safe routes, Jason?
Um, nothing to add.
Historic preservation, Ken?
No addition.
Health authority, Ken?
No addition.
Solid waste and recycling task force, Robin?
No addition, but I did want to communicate that that will need to probably continue. I think we set that to expire at 12 of 2020. So we are looking at maybe almost a two-year plan, given that this year was so unusual to be making those decisions, so.
Okay, great. Police and Fire Commission, Kathy?
Nothing more.
Plan Commission, Isaac?
Uh, nothing additional except for that we just passed the code amendment, Chapter 22.
Finally, thank you. All right, I have nothing additional to add for Plan Commission. Other reports that were in the packet were the Water and Sewer Financial Report, the Airport Financial Report, Department Progress Reports, and the Platteville Economic Health Partners Progress Reports. Any questions? Okay, then we're ready for our, for our, our first regular action item. Adam, that is the three-year strategic plan.
Yes, so obviously, at the last meeting, we had kind of the review or final review of the draft version of the strategic plan. And based on the feedback that we got, the recommendation was kind of to move this forward. So this is the kind of finalization process for the 2021 to 2023 strategic plan. So number one, I want to obviously thank everybody on the council, staff, our city manager intern, Ben Bilkey, and Dr. Will LaSore for all the work that obviously went into kind of creating this plan and going over the goals, the, you know, community values, the overall, you know, information that was put into it. And obviously, also want to thank our residents for taking the time to fill out the survey. I think that gave us a lot of great information to kind of review here over the next couple of years and kind of prioritize projects. But essentially, what we're looking for tonight is obviously a motion to adopt this plan. And that will then kick off basically into effect the 2021 to 2023 strategic plan. And the next step would be to get this information out, obviously, to the public and then start prioritizing with staff and with the council how we tackle some of the three-year goals that we have put in place for the three kind of core value sections that we have created.
Okay, so we saw the strategic plan. We all, most of us participated in, in person or via Zoom, some of us are in planning sessions. Thank you to the staff. Thank you to Ben. Certainly, thank you, Will. So now we're at the point where we are ready to maybe ask any questions and perhaps adopt this. So Jason, questions on this plan?
Uh, no questions.
Uh, Eileen, questions?
No questions.
Questions? Okay, questions? Okay. Robin?
No questions.
Isaac?
No questions.
Kathy?
Um, one, um, I, I think this has been very thorough from the, the first meeting. It was a great process. I just want to verify that this is sort of a working document, obviously, that we need to fine tune and get more of the action steps and the timetable included. And we will be consistently working on that, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so what'll happen, Kathy, is either in December or January, somewhere around that timeframe, we'll have the common council kind of look at the goals. And then that's where we sit down and kind of set some strategic action plans that'll go into effect. So I'll be doing the same thing, obviously, with department heads. We'll be meeting and kind of going over how we think as staff we can tackle these, and then we'll bring that information to the council.
Okay.
Okay, Ken, any questions?
No, I just have a couple of minor changes for the city manager and Ben, I assume. One is under, is above Figure 1. So can you find that?
Yep, the quality of life in Platteville.
Yes.
Yep.
To the paragraph, the second, second line from the bottom in the paragraph. And it states in there as being good for Platteville regarding. I think something's missing there. Do you find where I'm talking about?
Oh, yep, I see what you mean.
Okay, the other one, I guess it gets smaller here now as far as what I can find, is going to strategic planning framework. And it's the community value success factors.
We need an S on there. Got it?
Yes, you know, I hit that, you know, and that's, that's like a stolen law.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Okay, and Adam, you said that the next step will be, after this adoption, will then be to pull out the 2021 statements and do action items under those statements to see how we achieve that.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have no other comments. So with everyone having made comments and no additional questions, do I hear council action?
Well, I will make a motion to adopt the City of Platteville 2021, 2023 to 2023 strategic plan.
Okay.
And we have a motion by Eileen and a second by Ken to adopt the 2021, 2021 to 2023 strategic plan as presented. Candace? Nichols?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, that is the only action item on our agenda tonight. So we are now into the
Going to try to share a screen now, and hopefully that will go better than what happened before. Are you able to see my screen now about the history of the property?
Yes.
Um, okay, so Ken and members of the common council, this is a document that you were sent along with a PowerPoint presentation that just went to council members. So if you can't see it, I hope that sometime in the next couple of weeks that, that you would look at it. When we have given presentations on this, they've run an hour and a half long. I am, I, I know at this late hour, I've asked for about five minutes because that's probably about what people can take. But I do hope before the next meeting, if you could, you would take a look at that PowerPoint. It was actually part of the packet that went to the Historic Preservation Commission. And there are also three articles that we have put together that puts it in a, a less sort of work cited, reference-y format in a more readable format. In any case, what I wanted to share with you was that, as you know, our group Friends of Indian Park is also seeking state and national designations. It meets or exceeds every criteria. And you only need one, and it meets and exceeds It meets or exceeds every criteria, and you only need one, and it meets and exceeds all of them. So I wanted to briefly run through those. And also, if you can see where those links that are on the Word document I sent you, that would give you more of this information in a more readable point. The first one introduces some of the mysteries of the place. The second talks about it as a cholera burial ground. The last one talks about the mounds there. And then there is also, since an issue has been raised about Indian mounds being near water, there's, I typed up a 1917 article talking about how in 1837 the area looked. In short, that area was a very hilly area with four springs and a big gorge. But back to the criteria, a place might be important for historic designation because of its connection to local personages. Indian Park connects to both the history of city founder John Roundtree, who gave the park.
Yes, he's been a local town in screen.
Yeah, and his home is on the Register of National Historic Places to Reverend John Lewis, whose Lewis Street is named after Alvin Dixon, who was.
He was hearing something about Indian Park, and this thing showed up and you can't get it right.
Through these men, it also connects to the Platteville Academy, which received, along with schools in Madison and Milwaukee, the first educational charters in the state, something to be very proud of. And as you know, Platteville Academy became the first normal school, merged with the mining school, which was also the first in the state to become what is now UW-Platteville. And as our documents and research show, the land given by Roundtree to the city to be a free burial ground in perpetuity and connects to John Lewis, the Presbyterian and Congregational Church through numerous transactions that we have documented about in those articles. It also connects to these three men of prominent historic interest, one of the criteria. That is Roundtree, Lewis and Dixon, as well as the fourth, Josiah Pickard. And through them, a lot of the history of the religion of this area and the religious and civic conflict over slavery, anti-slavery. Since Roundtree was a slave owner, Dixon, Lewis and, and Picard, anti-slavery. And the Presbyterian Church in Platteville and Southwest Wisconsin took the highly unusual step of changing denominations, becoming the Congregational Church. And by the way, the Congregationalist Church is also on the National Registry of Historic Places. The Congregational Church, interestingly, never gave up the deed to the land, although they do appear to have forgotten about it, perhaps because of the protracted legal squabbles with Roundtree's heirs, which we've also documented. Along with connections to historical personages, historic designation may be connected to significant historic events. So we've mentioned pro and anti-slavery squabbles. But even more overtly documentable is its history as a burial ground for people who died during epidemics. Likely it holds smallpox burials from the 1840s, and definitely it holds cholera burials from 1850 to 1855. The most famous such burial, and the only one legibly marked, is that of 1812 veteran Thomas Paine Aiken, whose headstone is in the park erected through the work of his descendant Laura Graney and the Leo Kane post of the American Legion VFW. There is also an illegible mystery stone, as we've called it, and it may be even older than the smallpox and cholera burials. That's, brings me to the final point, archaeology, and the so-called Indian in the middle, which I'll get to in about a minute. But along with the verifiable cholera burials, there's also the probable burial of Reverend John Lewis himself. Although since he died of tuberculosis rather than cholera, his headstone at least, and maybe his body was moved elsewhere. In 1917, the year that the city ordered, the cemetery vacated. Even, and then, in 1918, I'm sorry, the state ordered in 1917, the city ordered in 1918. All of that is in that document that I had up on the screen there. And some people were explicitly prevented, like the Aikens, for example, from removing them. And we've documented that, and the Platteville Journal has written a couple of articles about it. Copies of that are also in the PowerPoint. As late as 1850, when some people were exploring the idea of building houses on the site of what had by then changed from Hill Graveyard to Cemetery Park, that was really not a winning name, then Roundtree Park, North Park, Indian Park, Fourth Street Cemetery. And from 1940s on, it was mainly called Indian Park, again, as we documented. But city attorney block advised against building anything there, presumably because one should not deserve cemeteries, until the cemetery was vacated, and this one was never totally vacated. Block is still with the legal firm he once founded. So I also want to point out, when the decision was made in 1918 to vacate the cemetery and level the ground there, it wasn't carried out. There is no record of that being carried out by everyone, though it may have been by a few individuals. And it's pretty easy to see why. The Leo Kane, American Legion is named after Leo Kane, who died in 1918 in World War I. So the city and its residents, as we noted by looking through Platteville journals from 1917 to 1918, they were preoccupied at that time with World War I. The draft age, as we got near to the end of World War I, was going, was going to be raised up to age 40 for men. And after that, there was a Spanish flu epidemic, as we've heard a lot about lately with COVID-19. So though there was an order to vacate the cemetery, it's fairly clear that it was never done. Anyway, as I've mentioned, the area now called Indian Park already exceeds state and national requirements for historic designation. But there is one other category that has maybe drawn the most attention. And that is listed by the state as, well, Indian Park is listed as an uncataloged cemetery to this day. But the final criteria I want to talk about is of archaeological interest. A site may have historic significance if it affords the opportunity to quote, "carry out pre-contact archaeology." That is how statewide and nationally, one is able to protect places first and do the archaeology second. Although giving this designation doesn't require anyone to do that. It's just that it might be a really cool thing to do. And that particularly pertains to native burials and mounds. For more than 100 years, some people in Platteville have been told, and even taught in elementary school, back when OE Gray was in elementary school, that there are mound or mounds in the park. Students used to be led out to the park from OE Gray for a talk on Indian mounds and the need to treat them with, with respect back in the time when that middle part of the park wandered with a wrought iron fence. The outer part also was fenced at one point. Older residents we've interviewed remember native gatherings there through the 19-teens. And these were regular gatherings, according to a 1962 article that is also in our presentation. And those stopped abruptly in the 19-teens. Older residents also remember more than one mound, or at the least the area once being hilly, hence the name Hill Graveyard. And that is also why on this list of documents, you have a link to an article that I've given a copy of the article and also retyped called "Platteville 90 Years Ago" as appeared to our, there's also some account of the abundance of water that greeted early settlers that talks about the springs there and many other places. So the site offers an abundance of opportunity for archaeological study, both of the probable mounds, but also that so-called mystery stone that no one can read. And even the, an answer to the question of whether victims of the powder mine explosions, which were in the middle to mid-late 1800s, if they were buried there. And then whether the so-called graveyard diggings, which is a very early mining site, whether they were at that. Now, all of that last group is to some degree speculative. But that is why in state and national historic designations, they use the word "may" rather than "does," because you can't tell until you go in with ground penetrating radar or something like that. So think of what a great teaching park it could be if there were historic markers there. I've appeared before you before and offered to help write them if anyone is interested in such a thing. But one way to get students excited about where they live and the history of where they live is seeing how a place that just looks like a little plot of land connects so much to the history's past. Noting, by the way, that Southwest Wisconsin has the highest concentration of native mounds in the world, not the country, but the world. But most of them have been destroyed. And they can learn about the history of the city, city founder Roundtree and John Lewis, and the tension between slavery, anti-slavery, the educational history of the Little Platteville Academy and how it grew into what is now UW-Platteville. Epidemiology history, which isn't that interesting to teach unless you're talking about right here under your feet, this is a cholera burial ground. And this is what happened then. This is what smallpox was like. The mining history, not just of the first mining school, which is great, but also of the powder explosions and the people who, who died because of those explosions. And previously to that, transmission of cholera was higher in mining towns because of the water that you use in mining, and that being one of the ways it's transmitted. The City of Platteville's interest in the park has been periodic, as our research shows. And then it's forgotten for a while, then there's interest again. So now, while there is interest, is a great time for this designation. It is, as we've talked about in our earlier presentations, we feel it's sacred ground. Not only is it sacred ground, if those mounds are native mounds, it would be sacred ground to native people. But it's sacred ground to people whose descendants are, are buried there. The land that, and when Lori Graney and I and Crystal Prohaska finished our presentation at the senior center, Lori read from an article in the Telegraph Herald called "The Mounds Along the Mississippi River." And she read these words, and I'd like to conclude, conclude my time here with reading them again. She said in quoting the author of that article, "That I try to be cognizant of cultural appropriation these days. I don't make any assumptions about the lives and ways of the indigenous people who built the mounds," and I'd add, "and who had those gatherings, whatever they were. But instead, I focus on what I believe we hold in common, that the land that holds our dead is sacred, that the land that bears and cradles our lives is sacred. And sacred lands should be treated with reverence." So we hope that you will decide to agree with the, the HPC and recognize the park as an area of local historic significance, so its past can be known and appreciated by everyone. Thank you for letting me speak at the end of this very long meeting. I appreciate your time.
Okay, designation of Indian Park as a local historic site. Ken, are you, is Ken with us yet?
Oh, yes.
Ken, you chair the Historic Preservation Commission. Do you have anything that you'd like to add to Terry's presentation?
I'm the director, but just to say that they did a tremendous amount of work on this presentation in the study of the, of the mound area.
Okay. Um, questions from council members? Kathy?
No, no questions at this time. I just think that a phenomenal amount of work has gone into this. And I think the entire community should be very proud of the work that you've done.
Isaac?
I'll just echo Kathy's comments there.
Okay, Robin? You have to unmute yourself, Robin.
Here I am, sorry. Um, I'm, one, did you send that email from your account? Because I'm not seeing it. I don't know if anyone else is seeing the presentation that Terry just gave us. But I'll just let you know I didn't see it.
I sent it, oh, sorry Lori, thank you.
This, this is Lori. It would have came from Colette. She forwarded on.
Okay, I'll look differently then, knowing it was maybe one of the others.
I can send it to you right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then I'm just thinking about the concerns over the name Indian Park and just hoping that if that's something that you feel confident has been vetted appropriately, that it is part of the education that happens there in the park. You somehow inform the public as to how it was named and why US committee members are all comfortable moving forward and continuing with that name. And I just wondered if that gets harder to change, if you don't feel like it's been, been vetted all the way once you make this designation or not, or if you feel like that will be still open. And then my last point would just be that I think that it's really important that you get as much signage and as much attention drawn to that space as a beautiful tourist location or destination walk in town. And I would be happy to pledge money personally to help with that. So I would challenge everyone else in this meeting, small or large, to give something towards this effort, because I think it needs a little extra momentum.
Hey, thank you, Robin. Eileen?
No, I'm, I'm interested in the information you have accumulated so far. It certainly has began to answer a lot of questions that people have had for a long time, including me, about that particular park. So good job.
Uh, Jason?
I'm really excited for this, and I hope that there's other places in Platteville too that we can really emphasize and showcase some, some history. And yeah, thank you to the group for, for doing all that work and putting it together.
Okay, Terry, your hand is up. I'm assuming it's up because you've already spoken.
Yeah, yes, I just wanted to respond to Robin. We intentionally were not addressing the naming issue, but the designation wouldn't. I, I guess it's of concern to all of us that people remember it's a cemetery. But, you know, you could call it Ancestors Park, you could call, I, we are intentionally not addressing that issue because historic designation does not preclude you from changing a name. It precludes, so thank you for bringing that up. And if you notice sidestepping around that issue, you're right.
Okay, so it's about naming a space, not, or designating a space, not designating a name. I also echo thanks to the Crystal, to Lori, and to Terry for the work they've done on this. And I know they've made presentations, and I look forward to being able to see those. So if we have no further questions on this, this item then would be moved to action for our October 27th meeting. And thank you, Terry, and we'll see that everybody gets the links to the programs, et cetera.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a plan development. Golf and Country Club, Joe?
Yes, the Platteville Golf and Country Club is interested in doing a development on part of the golf course property. So they would like a plan unit development approval to allow that to happen. So essentially what they're looking at doing is taking approximately 1.9 acre portion of that property. So as you enter the golf course property off of Water Street, through the main driveway, there's a, a portion that's some green space. There's old tennis courts that are located in an area and kind of an overflow parking area. So that's the area that they're interested in doing a development on. So the project, if, if this first part is approved, would actually be a multi-stage zoning approval. So this is a planning and development, kind of the first phase of that, the general development plan. So that kind of outlines the general use of the property, you know, access, the location of the buildings, general size of the buildings, and so forth. And then the follow-up to that would be a specific implementation plan, the part two of the PUD, which gets into much more detail on the actual project itself. Right now, the property is actually located in the township. It's not in the city of Platteville. It's in our ET zoning area. But they would be interested in annexing this part of the property, which would allow them to connect to city utilities. So that would be a follow-up approval as well. And then kind of in conjunction with that, they would actually do a certified survey map approval, basically a land division to create that 1.9 acres that would be annexed, and that would be where the development is located. So again, there's several steps to come, but this is the first part of the approval. So development itself, what they're looking at is residential. They're looking at a condominium development, basically duplex condominiums. So there'd be five. So there'd be five total buildings, each one with two units. So there'd be 10 total dwelling units in that development. They would relocate the existing driveway slightly to the north, and then that would be a shared driveway with the golf course, country club, as well as these condominiums. Three buildings on the north side, two on the south side. So basically, that's what they're proposing. There would be some, obviously, the connection to city utilities, I mentioned. There would be some onsite stormwater detention. I think they're looking at basically individual rain gardens or smaller detention facilities for each building rather than a larger facility. So additional details that would have to be worked out. I would mention that the Plan Commission did consider this request at their meeting on the 5th. And there was a recommendation for approval for this first part of the PUD with several conditions. The certified survey map would have to be created and approved, as I mentioned. The annexation, the follow-up to the SIP, and we would want to do a development agreement as part of that, so we can document the specific conditions for this proposed project. They did recommend the individual rain gardens for each building rather than a larger detention pond. There was some discussion about the one shared driveway, so the, that is part of the approval recommendation, but they would like to see a traffic report that kind of verified that one driveway is adequate. And the Plan Commission would also like to see some some internal, external connections for pedestrians, possibly shared trail that golf courts pedestrians could use, either multi-use path or sidewalk to connect the condominiums, the golf courses, as well as to the, probably the multi-use path that's across the street from this development. But that would be part of the recommendation to see some additional details and options for that as part of the SIP approval. So this will be an action item at the next meeting. Any questions?
Before, Dan Resense is here from Delta 3, and I believe there is an engineer on this project. So as you, Dan, do you have anything to offer in addition to what Joe has said before we start around?
The only thing I'd like to mention is that with the discussion of the driveway, whether it's one or two, and then the pedestrian crossing of Highway 80, since the Wisconsin DOT does have jurisdiction over that stretch of highway, we will have to confer with them about those two items. So I just want to just mention that.
Okay. Questions of Joe? We'll start around with Jason.
One question I have is, in terms of the development, what type of buyer are they trying to attract? Are the duplexes, like how, what is going to be the layout of them? Are they going to be big enough for like families, or are they just looking at, you know, what type of clientele are they hoping to attract?
Right now, they're working on their final floor plan, but they're looking at something that's going to be approximately two bedrooms, more or less. And they're looking to target professionals who have their children, they're empty nesters, and/or retirees.
Okay. Do you know roughly what we're looking at in terms of asking price?
They have not come up with that yet. They wanted to get through the GDP approval first, and then they're going to start working on those finer details. Not necessarily that the cost is part of the SIP process, but they do need to provide some building elevations and some color schemes. So they'll be, they are in the process of working on that right now.
Okay.
Eileen?
No, I don't have any questions.
Robin?
I don't have any questions right now.
Isaac?
No questions, but just a comment that I think this is just a much-needed project, you know, that the city's been looking for. And, you know, congrats to the golf course for, you know, proceeding with this, and hopefully this gets done and taken care of.
Kathy?
I agree with what, exactly what Isaac just said. I think it is something that is needed. And Dan, maybe, and I know I'm probably splitting hairs, but the paperwork, the numbers that we've seen for the PUD say 1.9 acres. In your letter, it says 1.89. I'm assuming that will be fine-tuned with the certified survey map?
Yes.
That's all.
Okay. Ken?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. My first one is, the five duplexes, will they all be built at one time? In other words, not build one, one year, and then wait until you get another buyer and build it, the next second one, two years later? In other words, are all of these five will be built at one time?
In a perfect world, yes. However, one of the reasons that the golf course is doing this, they are trying to generate some revenue. And if they were able to presell all of the units, I think you would see them sell all of them, or, excuse me, construct all of them. However, I'm there, I'm anticipating this is kind of going to be a phased project. They have had interest in the units, especially the units that are on the north side of the driveway. So I could foresee that those three units being built first, and the units on the south side of the driveway could be built in the future.
Okay, and, but as far as utilities, the city would be putting in water and sewer utilities, and that would go for those five units. There would not be any water and sewer to the golf course portion?
That is correct.
What does the golf course building have?
They, the current clubhouse is on its own well and septic. That's going to remain in the township at this time. And so the water and sewer that would be extended to these units would be by the developer, which is by the country club. I don't think the city wants to extend water and sewer at this time over there. It'd be great if they would, but I don't think they will. But it will just service these five duplexes.
But as far as the utilities, the city would be extending utilities for all five. So if they build slowly, whatever we want to call it, in phases, the city will be, could be very short on money as far as getting income taxes back from this project.
No, no, the city will not be extending the utilities because this is a private development. The country club will have to pay, have all expenses incurred for extending the water and sewer.
The golf course, you can pay for all those expenses for the water?
Typically, the developer does, unless there's a special agreement. Unless the council is interested in assisting the golf course with extending the utilities, the golf course will be, is typically responsible, the developer, the golf course in this case, is responsible for extending all of them, and it's at their cost.
What does the city have to extend to the five units then? How much will that cost be? And where is it coming from as far as the utility, water and sewer?
Currently, there's water and sewer on the, on the east side of Water Street. But in terms of cost to the city, there will be none, once again. And so the developer will be responsible for any permitting, any connection fees, cost of pipe installation, et cetera.
Okay, in your write-up, or the write-up, it says this will be a project for retired people, which I certainly agree with. We need to keep more people in Platteville that are having people move away after they retire. And also for professionals. Now, I guess I'm looking at what type of building they're going to make for them. For example, retired people, I very much favor a building which is handicap accessible. Because if you want retired people to live there, it may occur in a few years that they need to have handicap accessibility for their particular condo. So is there going to be handicap accessibility built into these buildings? And how many stories will the buildings have? How many floors? One, two, three?
They're going to be a single story with the basement, is the intent. Especially the units that are on the north side of the driveway. The intent with them is that they would have a walkout basement back onto the golf course. The, as I mentioned earlier, the golf course folks are in the process of working with a local contractor to develop the floor plan. And I would agree, Ken, that if their target market is professionals and/or retirees, that they will have to take into consideration making them handicap accessible. But ultimately, that's going to be their choice, and they know their target market.
And the driveway will be private as far as serving the five, five units plus the golf course building?
That is correct.
And so all of the servicing as far as snow removal, et cetera, will be paid for by by them, not by the city. The city will not be required to do snow removal. How about garbage pickup? What about that?
They would have to have a similar agreement with Faridys that the other condominium projects in Platteville have. And I'm not, so I'm not sure if Faridys come in, or they have to pay for them. But whatever that agreement they have with other condominium associations, they'd have to have the same agreement, I would assume.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay, and the comment I would make is that one of the recommendations of the Plan Commission was for an external, external connection for pedestrians and others. The reason that was there is because one of the discussion items dealt with when the golf course can again have crowds. Where, where will people park? Because this in essence is the overflow parking area. And the answer was, we would expect them to park on the street. So that would be Water Street. So if you're expecting your guests to park on Water Street, then it probably is a good thing to provide them with a safe way to get to the facility that they're trying to access. So I think the Plan Commission, most of the Plan Commission felt really pretty strongly about this path, whether it be a trail, or a path, or a sidewalk. But to have some way that pedestrians could pass safely, since this is one road serving not only the five condominiums, but also the golf course. That's my only comment. So this is on for information and discussion for tonight. We'll move it on for action at the next meeting. If you have any additional questions about it, please talk with Joe, or send them to Adam, and we'll see what we can do to get them answered. I think that's it for Pete.
Great, thank you.
Let's move on to see inclusivity, diversity, and equity update.
Okay, so just a quick update, kind of on this, is again, we've had this as a placeholder of all of our meetings. So number one, you know, Council President Barb Doss and I continue to kind of review the best way to start getting information out, kind of creating an inclusivity, diversity task force. That's actually been one of the, kind of, item number three there that I indicated, where during my Region 5 Wisconsin City Manager Association Zoom meeting, there is a group, Harry Hawkins from the, it's Namaya Center for Urban Leadership Development, is actually going to be working with our Region 5 City Managers and Administrators Group, kind of giving us some good pointers on how to get feedback, and specifically, one of those is how you get individuals to become part of a task force or group. So that's something, as kind of city managers, we all agree that we would use some of our future kind of training budgets to bring in Harry to kind of look at that. And that's something we'll obviously be discussing. I'll be discussing with Harry about, you know, the opportunities, if there would be anything that would make sense to bring in for the city council or for staff. Number two on there, Jamie Collins. I'm working with Jamie again to schedule kind of two presentations related to LGBTQIA issues. And we were looking at trying to doing something in the end of October or November. Unfortunately, Jamie's schedule got a little packed, which is great for Jamie. That's really good there, that he's getting kind of out, she's getting out there. But, so what we're targeting right now is I've had communications with Jamie about looking at January 13th and possibly the 26th to have those two meetings. So if I can kind of get that finalized, I will let the staff and council know about those presentations. So that is pretty much everything I kind of have for an inclusivity, diversity update at this time.
Okay, once around. Jason, any questions?
No questions, just interested in about the trainings when they come up, so.
Okay, Eileen?
No questions.
Robin?
Not at this time.
Isaac?
No questions.
Kathy?
No questions.
Ken?
I didn't mark anything.
Okay.
I have no questions.
All right, Adam. I think then we're going to move on to Item D, establishing parameters for the sale of water and sewer utility revenue bonds. And I think this is Nicola.
It is Nicola. And thank you, everybody, for hanging in there. So in a nutshell, what this is about is timing. It's a water sewer revenue bond issue that we're doing for the 2020 CIP. And we're starting to get close to the end of the year with holidays of various kinds. And so what we're asking the council to consider is allowing the city manager and administration director to authorize the actual sale on the sale date of the bonds. So if you had a chance to read the staff note, you'll see that due to the timing with standard and pause timeline and the holidays, as I mentioned, it would be best if we could schedule the sale of the bonds on December 2nd. And that would allow us to close on the bonds and receive the funds the week of December 14th, which is the week prior to Christmas week, which is just cleaner for everybody. But in order to do that, since we don't have a council meeting scheduled on the 2nd, then when the resolution comes before the council for action at the next council meeting, to, which is the first step in authorizing the bonds, then that resolution would contain certain parameters. And the parameters would, with limits, give staff the authorization to accept the sale of the bond on sale day. Some of those parameters would be who has the authority. Myself and/or Adam. Then it would also have some limits surrounding the purchase price, not too much, not too little. The interest cost would be limited as to how high. And then some other things. And so those parameters would be included in the resolution. And then the council, if it adopted the resolution at the next meeting, would be, would be there by making those authorizations. So the purpose of the item on today's agenda is to explain this to the council and to get consensus from the council that the council is comfortable to have that resolution with those parameters at the next meeting. The alternative would be to go through our normal process, which would mean the resolution would come next meeting without the parameters. But then the sale of the bonds would have to be pushed to the first council meeting in December, and that would mean the closing of the bonds would probably be the last week of the year. And as I said, that is not staff's preference. Is there any questions? Is there anything that I could explain on that to council?
Okay, Jason, do you have questions?
No questions.
Eileen, do you have questions on this?
No, I do not.
Robin, do you have questions about this?
No questions.
Isaac?
No questions.
Kathy?
No questions.
Ken?
No.
Okay, and my understanding of this is that this is for this sale. It's not, this, this parameters thing doesn't carry for every sale. It would be specific for this. It would be specific for this sale, and it might be for a future sale if we included parameters. Is that correct?
Correct. So this 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 authorization that would be given by the council at the next meeting would be for this bond sale only.
It's specific. Okay, then I think you can move that on to the next meeting.
Will do.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the memorandum is a memorandum of understanding with the Platteville Housing Authority. And Adam, you have this.
Yes, so this is something um as part of kind of my onboarding and looking into um kind of some things that I think we need to dot some Ts and cross some Is. Uh, this came upon kind of looking into the Platteville Housing Authority where for pretty much since its inception, um there's kind of been a handshake agreement in regards to um certain things that are kind of in-kind services that the city gives the Platteville Housing Authority. Um, and the majority of that is kind of what I outlined in the in the staff note is um, you know, office space, office equipment, audit support, uh specifically, you know, envelopes and supplies. Um, and what we noticed kind of going through some history is we never really had an official uh memorandum of understanding or an agreement that outlined um those services because uh just to kind of give some some insight to the to the council and anybody else. The so the Platteville Housing Authority uh was created in nineteen sixty-three, and the goal really was for it to be a autonomous organization from the city, um basically that it is kind of self-sustaining on its own. Um, that's part of the state statute requirements, and a lot of the requirements is that um it truly is a separate entity from the city, but has um obviously some key initiatives that the city is very uh, you know, appreciative of in trying to find uh housing for some of our lower or income residents um and potential uh citizens. So what this is, is this went through uh the process of me sitting down with the executive director and kind of drafting um a memorandum of understanding. Uh, this went to the Platteville Housing Authority at their meeting, and the recommendation was for it to come to the council and be approved and basically signed into uh permanent. So what would happen is if this would be agreed upon by the council, it'll go into effect on January first of twenty twenty-one um and kind of lays out the groundwork where for whatever reason there would be a uh a need to um either utilize that space that they're currently in or uh change the agreement. Uh, there has to be a one-year notice that would be given uh to the housing authorities just out of courtesy to be able to um kind of handle or absorb any of those changes.
Okay, folks. Comments or questions? Jason?
Uh, no questions.
Uh, Eileen?
No questions.
Robin?
This is real similar to something that was drafted for a nonprofit out of the City of Prairie Gashin uh City Hall that I worked through, so very familiar looking, much more thorough, though. Uh, seems like a very logical thing to follow through with.
Isaac?
No questions.
Kathy?
No questions.
Ken?
No addition.
And uh I guess my only question would be, I noticed that we are going to provide City of Platteville employees process mail and communicate inquiries. Uh, does that include the City of Platteville employees answering the Platteville Housing Authority phone?
No, it does not. So that would be if they would call our specific line. Um, we would answer that call and obviously direct them to the information that they would need to get in contact with Jennifer.
Okay, so we don't expect this to be a giant amount of time on a city employee's basis?
Correct.
Okay, and it appears that this cut this memorandum of understanding has no review time period in. Does it? I might have missed it. So, you know, will it be reviewed, you know, annually? Will it be reviewed every three years? Will it, you know?
Yeah, it doesn't have any set true um review time on there, but essentially if there would be any changes to the agreement, um it just has to be done with a year notice. So I think the intention would be to review it on an annual basis. So that is something that can be added in there.
I think it would be good to add the review time period. All right, anything else on the housing authority? Then we're going to move on to the budget presentation. It's only nine thirty.
All right, we're going to do this and then go to bed, right? Not the plan?
And tonight it's the presentation, so you can take this then and uh uh cogitate on it. Then next week on Tuesday night is the discussion of the presentation. So tonight, as Adam goes through it, write down the questions that you're you're going to feel you want to ask and that kind of thing. I and then during the week, continue study, and if you have those questions and you want to ask Adam those questions in the meantime, do so. But tonight, basically, presentation, not question and answer. That comes next week at a special meeting on the twentieth at six o'clock.
Is there going to be a hard copy of the budget?
Yes.
On the twentieth?
Yes, so we will make I will make sure that we get you a copy of the budget for that meeting, Ken.
Likely, uh, I I would also like a copy. I don't know how many others would actually like a hard copy of the budget. I see Kathy's head kind of shaking, yes, and
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, so we'll make sure we get everybody a hard copy.
Okay.
Okay, so I am going to share my screen here. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ken, can you see my screen?
Yes, but I see three people blocking part of it.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll try to do the best we can. All right, so obviously this is um as kind of Barb indicated, the city manager draft budget. So what I'm going to be going over with you guys tonight is what staff and I have kind of been analyzing. Um, you know, as Barb indicated, we're still putting the finishing touches on the budget, so there are still some items that are kind of not one hundred percent official yet. We're waiting on a couple of things from um the Department of Revenue. The finalized assessment has been made, so we are going off of kind of some assumptions of where we think things are. Um, but obviously there's some things that we just kind of wanted to do. So one of the first things I've always liked to do kind of in budget in budget conversations is have a quote for the year. Um, so this specifically is the one that um that we kind of wanted to use, which is from Alexa Von Tobal, which is a good financial plan. Is a roadmap that shows us exactly how the choices we make today will affect our future. Um, so that's just something to kind of think about. As Barb indicated, here's kind of the timeline we're going off of. So right now, obviously, is today. Um, we're doing the city manager buzzed presentation again on Tuesday, October twentieth at six P M. Um, we're going to have the first budget review session. And then it'll consequently, if we need to, we can have another session that would occur during the October twenty-seventh meeting. Um, but then that all kind of accumulates and putting all of the information out there, having a public hearing on the sixteenth, and then having another public hearing um essentially on the Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, where we then would be looking to adopt uh the twenty twenty-one budget. So just to kind of go over quickly, the uh kind of game plan for tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about budget basics, just for some of the new members and just kind of as a refresher to everybody else. Um, look a little bit at twenty twenty budget review to kind of talk about some of the parameters that I asked staff to kind of follow and put in place. Um, go over a little bit of the financial outlook and considerations that we're considering with this budget, and then uh get into some of the kind of the nitty-gritty details of the uh twenty twenty-one city manager budget. So the first thing, obviously, with budget basics is to talk about kind of the revenues and expenditures. So with a municipal budget, um the city obviously has to create a budget where revenues equal expenditures. So on the revenue side, we're obviously talking about, you know, any borrowings that are being done, um any state aid we're receiving, any fees or, you know, fines, et cetera. Um, and then taxes, obviously, from the property taxes and other taxes that we're getting. Expenditures really relate to kind of operating um expenses, capital spending, um debt payments, and then tid shortfalls are really the expenditures that are kind of over from year to year. Um, again, just to get in a little bit more detail about expenditures, so obviously there's the operating budget, which is the basic cost to run the day-to-day operations. Uh, there's the CIP that we obviously talked about last week and will talk about again. Those are one-time costs really for large capital items. Um, some are predictable, others are kind of one-offs that we've talked about, like the Business Highway one fifty-one. Um, there's debt service that we have to consider every year, which is the repayment on our loans, which are used to fund expensive, kind of long-lasting capital projects. Um, and then obviously we have our variant TIF districts, which have revenue and expenditures um that are handled within each of those specific districts. Uh, just a little bit on the operating revenue. So again, the the number one rule you kind of want to follow is one-time revenue should not be used to balance the operating budget, uh because really what you're doing then is kind of kicking the can down the curb. Uh, so we try to ensure that there's really two options to balance the budget. Uh, you either have to have a sustainable increase in revenues, or you have to look at a decrease in expenses. Um, so again, just to kind of relate to some personal equivalence, uh so your monthly pay must cover your ongoing personal expenses, utility, food, clothes, et cetera. And then again, just kind of using one-time revenue to balance your budget is like winning five hundred dollars in the lottery and then leasing a car with a monthly payment of five hundred dollars. You can cover the expense for one month, uh but you're not going to be able to cover the expense next month unless you win the lottery again. And if anybody wins the lottery, you are required to give it to the city, so just so you know. All right, debt service. Um, obviously, this is where the city borrows money to pay for large, long-life capital projects such as streets. Um, again, you know, we've talked about the future potential of a fire station. Uh, those are all considered kind of debt service projects. Uh, the length of the loan should not extend beyond the useful life of the item for which the funds were borrowed. So typically, for the most part, the city borrows in kind of twenty-year increments. Um, that's the general timeline. Uh, there are other ways you can do that between ten and fifteen years. The payments on the loan represents the city debt service. So again, there is a cap in the amount the city can borrow, which is the state uh, you know, policy of five percent of the equalized value, but then also the city has their own debt limit policy that was initiated in three point five. Um, so as we talked about uh kind of during the capital improvement plan, uh you can see that the twenty twenty equalized value was seven hundred and twenty-six million uh one hundred thousand, three hundred dollars. So the state borrowing limit is five percent of that. So the city would have the ability uh by state statute to borrow up to thirty-six million dollars um for projects. Essentially, as a principal outstanding in twenty twenty, we're at about twenty point five million, which is fifty-six point six percent um of our borrowing capacity. But as we've discussed, the city has a has a very uh conservative policy, which is good. Uh, where we actually will only allow three point five percent of our equalized value to be uh utilized. So using the same equation, that comes to about twenty-five million is what's available. So as of twenty twenty, so currently, right now, we're at about eighty point eight percent um of that policy. So we have about five million dollars of flexibility, um which is why a lot of the policies have been put in place. We're trying to not exceed the amount of debt we're paying off so that we don't hit that cap. Um, so again, with CIP funding, as we've talked about, again, there's a couple of different sources of funding. You can have the transfer from the general fund, which is extra reserves. So that's how kind of how we talked about in our plan right now. Um, we're anticipating about six hundred and eighty thousand of tax dollars to be utilized, and that's a combination of three hundred thousand dollars of um tax levy. I'm sorry, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of tax levy and then three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund reserve and previous tax levy that was made um to cover that. Uh, there's obviously carryover from previous years, so anytime there was a project that either didn't happen or came in under budget, um those are funds that you can use. There's short-term borrowing. Again, this is not typical, um and it's a sign of financial stress. So what you do here is you kind of borrow quickly to get a project done and then put that into a long-term borrowing. Um, there's base reserves, which may impact the bond ratings. Um, again, these are some of the reserves that you can try to create. And then there's obviously long-term borrowings used for street and some buildings, which is typically what um has kind of been the city's practice uh that we've utilized in the past. So again, uh CIP needs due to COVID nineteen and budget carry concerns, our best estimate is that the city conservatively has available six hundred and eighty thousand dollars to spend on predictable CIP items. Uh, these items include vehicle replacements, equip- equipment replacements, building repair, park improvements, sidewalk repair. Um, again, just to kind of touch on the topic that came up, additionally, the city has borrowed from about one to two million dollars for street reconstruction annually. And then under the current long-range financial plan, the city has limited the borrowing to the amount being retired each year. Uh, at our last meeting, the city kind of gave the direction, city council had authorized city staff to allow for an acceptance of this policy guideline uh to address the Business Highway one fifty-one project. Um, so what I can kind of tell you a little bit about that is just to I'm going to share a different screen here quickly, and then we'll go back to the PowerPoint. Um, just to kind of give you perspective, come on. Share screen. Okay. So as you can see, if everybody can see this, historically, we have only borrowed um what has been typically paid off in the year before. So that's this one million, two hundred and forty thousand number. So if the city, you know, if we were to only use that for our capital improvement borrowing items, as you can see, that creates over a twenty-year kind of life cycle using a conservative estimate. So our last borrowing that we did was about two point two percent. So just conservatively, I used a rate of two point five. Um, you can see that equates to about sixty-two thousand dollars a year in principal payments and then kind of various interest starting at thirty thousand and then going down for a total payment over the course of the life of that debt of one point five million dollars. So essentially, you borrow one point two with the interest, you get to one point five. Um, just kind of putting into perspective so the council can see, you know, we have talked about um funding the three projects, essentially the Business Highway one fifty-one, um the Dewey Street uh Normal Street Project, and then the seventy-five thousand dollars um for the storm kind of sewer issue that we're having. Um, on which court is it? It's something I'm drawing a blank. Um, you guys know what I'm talking about. There we go. Ken got it. So essentially, as you can see, this is two point eight five million. Um, what that does is essentially increases the principal by about forty-two thousand dollars. The interest then increases roughly by about nineteen thousand dollars. And as you can see, the total then is two point six million. So roughly, there's about a million dollars um difference that is, you know, going to happen over the life of kind of this borrowing. So, you know, essentially what we're looking at is a yearly change of about sixty-one thousand dollars between these two, which equates to, again, for every forty thousand dollars of um funding that, you know, general fund dollars, that equates to about a one percent tax rate increase. So just something to consider as we kind of go through this budget process of how that plays out. Um, that, you know, there's about a one million dollar kind of difference that we're looking at, which potentially in the future, what that means is um, you know, either we're going to have to, you know, hope for some growth that covers that additional, you know, one million dollars, or potentially that means there may be some reductions that we'll have to look at in the future in regards to either the capital plan or potentially, um, you know, some of our long, kind of larger cost dollar projects that we're talking about. Um, you know, may have to see how that plays out, whether that would get delayed or whether we look into things like that. So just something to kind of consider um as we're going through this process. The TIF districts, um TIF districts obviously are separate funds that have their own revenue and expenses. Um, if the revenue exceeds expenses, the amount goes into the fund balance for the district and future expenses. Uh, the TIF district may close early and the created tax base is added to the rest of the city. Um, if expenses exceed revenues and there isn't fund balance, then the general fund must cover the shortfall. Um, so again, just personal equivalents, imagine that you own of several small businesses. If the revenue exceeds expenses, you reinvest the money into the business. So obviously, if that TIS district is kind of a cash cow, which we we've had a couple of those, which then allow you to supplement other ones. Um, and then down the road, you'll see the business to make a profit. You can reinvest it back into roads, you know, in particular TIF projects, et cetera. The other scenario then is the business can't pay their expenses. You, as the owner, then have to pay from your personal account. So that's where you've heard in the conversation of the long-range financial plan um with TIF six, if we don't see kind of uh some more substantial increases in there, uh there's the potential that the general fund or tax levy will have to be used to cover those differences. Just to kind of give you a little bit of a budget review of kind of twenty twenty. So as you can see here, we are the green line right here, um which shows kind of where our tax rate has been. We've kind of done a little bit of a a a pyramid where we went up a little bit and then came back down over the last couple of years, and then have slowly steadily been going back up, as you can see. Um, this just kind of shows you the ranking of where we are specifically against some of our peers over the last couple of years. Again, we're not the highest, we're not the lowest, we're kind of right in the middle. Um, and then obviously, this talks about the property tax rate growth. Um, as you can see, you know, we're about three point two percent. So we're not the lowest, but we're definitely kind of on that lower end of growth. So that's something, obviously, we've discussed about with our strategic plan um of trying to find ways to, you know, increase the tax base um so that we can handle, you know, kind of future debt and future and future expenditures. Um, so one of the things I did ask staff pretty much to try to do this year because of COVID nineteen um was keep their budgets as close to budget neutral as possible. So this just kind of shows you where everything kind of fell in twenty twenty um in regards to revenue. Um, you know, what we're anticipating is we have seen a couple of reductions, so we'll get into that. But this just kind of shows you the majority of our revenue in twenty twenty um was really coming from intergovernmental revenues, which is a lot of the state aids that we get. Um, and then obviously, property taxes are the two main components. There obviously then is a sprinkling of others in regards to kind of public fees and forfeits, licenses and permits. Uh, but really, the main two generators of our uh general fund revenues come from intergovernmental revenues and kind of property taxes. Um, and unfortunately, as we'll get into it, you know, with COVID-19, what we're seeing is we are anticipating that a lot of these kind of, you know, sub areas are going to be looking at potentially some decreases in 2021. Expenditure is kind of the same thing. Um, typically we ask staff to keep, uh, pretty level in regards to those changes. So what you can see here is the majority of our expenditures are related to kind of three areas. For really, uh, public safety is obviously the highest, um, public works, culture and recreation, and then general government. So now to just get into kind of some financial outlooks and considerations. So um, using projections for operational needs, anticipated borrowing and CIP spending. Um, the long range financial plan provided a look at the financial factors influencing the next five years. Um, so one thing obviously is, uh, you know, we continue, and I think every municipality continues to see this. Unfortunately, operational expenses are not going down. Um, you know, we continue to see increases in construction costs, increases in, um, you know, specific contracts and services. Um, so everybody is kind of dealing with how increase in operational expenses are expected to outpace this new construction. And as you can see, our net new construction was 0.23%. Um, so that does put a, you know, some stress on the ability to kind of keep pace with what we see as, you know, some un, un, you know, unable to change expenses that occur every year with things going up. Without future development, and obviously it was anticipated in the, uh, financial plan that TID six would require some levy support. Uh, again, looking at sustaining 680,000 of annual levy support for the CIP will require use of reserves. As we talked about, that's $300,000 of, uh, our general fund balance kind of being utilized towards that. Um, you know, TID six and citywide growth and our increases in state funding would help the above. Uh, and then city, uh, city funding support for a new fire facility will need to be monitored due to debt service requirements. So again, we're currently in the kind of, um, development stays of our, of our study. And what we're hoping that study will do is kind of determine a couple of things. Uh, number one, the, the best direction to move forward with the fire department. Whether that means kind of a redevelopment of the current fire station or a new facility and kind of getting a determination of cost, um, and when then, then what we can do is take that information and look into our debt service requirements and see when, you know, financially that would be feasible. Um, and then start looking at kind of multiple fundraising options to, uh, make that a reality. So kind of now going into the 2021 city manager budget. Um, obviously some of the things that are budget drivers, which again are operational increase, expenses are, uh, salaries, you know, benefits, uh, mandates, um, elections, contracts. Uh, some revenues that are always things that we have to consider every year are state aids, whether those are going to go up or down. Um, the hotel, hotel, hotel tax obviously is one this year due to COVID-19. Um, we have seen reductions and anticipate that that will kind of continue into 2021. Um, you know, some revenue related to new development. So that really comes into play with, um, you know, when we get some rather large scale projects that come into the city. Um, there's increases that you'll see in, uh, building expenses. Obviously some of the meetings that have to occur, um, there's permits and applications that they have to follow. Uh, then other things that we always consider is debt service, you know, specifically the principal and interest payments. Um, any TID support that would be needed. And then obviously with the expenditure restraint, that's a pretty big revenue number, um, that we get every year. So we want to ensure that we stay within that expenditure restraint guidelines, um, so that we continue to get those payments. So just some things that, um, obviously you'll see kind of coming up and things that we continue to kind of review as staff in the budget next week is one of the things that we're looking at doing is as part of our, um, strategic action plan in regards to marketing. Uh, we're looking at, uh, funding to move the communication specialist, which currently right now is a 30 hour per week position, um, to full time. And a lot of that has to do with, um, kind of the increased planning that we are looking at doing for marketing, trying to tell a better story. But then also just one of the things we've noticed, obviously with COVID-19 is, is keeping up with a lot of the kind of marketing and just, uh, promotional information. So that's one of the things that we have looked at to try to address in the 2021 budget. Um, the other thing that we're looking at is the creation of what is called a, a human resource specialist position. And this again is to assist the, uh, city manager administration director and finance department with personnel matters. Um, again, one of the things we've noticed obviously with COVID-19 is there's a lot of kind of paperwork and requirements and documentation that is needed. Um, but also just in general, there's a lot in regards to human resources that we would like to try to address with this position. Um, to help kind of take off some of those responsibilities to allow, um, you know, various kind of the finance department, the administration director to be able to focus more on kind of some of the financial end of things and have this position really be, um, kind of a, an assistant to the city manager and dealing with, um, some of the HR stuff. Uh, one of the things that we throw, that we're looking at in regards to obviously wage increases. Um, this is something that I've discussed a lot with the, you know, many, uh, city managers and administrators that I'm on meetings with. Um, they're running the gamut right now. The majority are going for a 2% increase. Uh, due to some of the kind of budgetary, uh, concerns we have with COVID-19. Um, you know, the proposal that I put in is a 1.5 wage increase for all city staff members except for the city manager position. Um, you know, my intention is not to, uh, request any type of a, um, raise going into next year, uh, obviously because of the, uh, you know, respect that you guys forgave me for allowing me to come here, um, and, and being a part of this community. So um, I think that's something that we're proposing is to try to get a 1.5 wage increase for all the city staff, which then obviously would apply to, uh, the police department as well. Some of the other things obviously we're looking at is, you know, the budgetary review of COVID-19 impacts related to revenue and revenue and expenditure. Um, so some of the things that we'll get to into the next slides are, we are seeing some reductions in some of those revenues that are directly related to COVID-19. Uh, which is, you know, with having less people kind of driving around. Um, you know, there's impacts there with less people staying in hotels. We've seen some impacts to that. Um, so, you know, obviously with our recreation, we've seen some kind of reductions there. So considering that. Um, one of the things we continue to look at, uh, obviously again, with the strategic planning goals um, related to the museum is the consideration of funding to create a 20 hour per week museum specialist of education and interpretation position. Um, and I'll explain in a couple of few slides how that impact, how that could impact specifically the tax rate. Uh, due to coronavirus relief funding, uh, we are anticipating that there will be no levy support that would be required this year um, for the taxi or bus fund, which is usually a tax levy supported, uh, by $45,000. Um, so that's a change we're anticipating in this budget. And then one of the other things that we found too is due to some of the reimbursement of economic development costs um, that the finance team and myself were able to kind of review and analyze. Um, as you noticed in the kind of long range financial plan when others was here, they indicated there would be about a $60,000 um, requirement that would be needed, uh, to be funded by the general fund tax levy. Uh, to, so due to some review of some kind of expenditures that should have, uh, been supported by some of the other TIFs. Um, we actually will not be needing to, uh, have any tax levy funded to support TID number six in 2021. Um, so that definitely has been a help to the budget for 2021. So just kind of briefly to go over some of the operational increases we're seeing. Um, obviously the HR position that we're looking at doing, um, is one of the higher ones. Uh, there's a possible increase for IT services, um, that is being implemented, obviously with, uh, the fees that they're looking at for next year. The communication specialist to full time has an impact. There's some finance outlay, um, dollars that are looking to increase. And that mainly is to implement a new, uh, financial software system uh, that we think will help with a, uh, kind of invoicing and, uh, making a little, a little, uh, help for the finance team and being able to kind of prioritize invoicing and looking at that for future. Uh, you know, potential for budgeting and impacts. Um, there's some senior center grant expenses that are occurring, uh, street equipment repairs, uh, some increase to the garbage, uh, and then street supplies. Some decreases that we're seeing, uh, fringe benefit reduction. So one of the things that definitely helped in the 2021 budget is we were informed that there would be no increase, um, to the health, uh, benefits this year. Um, so that definitely has been a big help. And obviously with some of the changes that we've seen in staff with kind of retiring or moving to different positions. Um, there's been, uh, some decreases that we're anticipating going forward in regards to the fringe benefit section. Um, the room tax allocation, that obviously is a direct result of COVID. So with less money coming in, uh, on the revenue side, there's an expectation then that there's going to be a reduction in the room tax allocation that's going out. Uh, street lighting, we've seen some savings there in regards to some of the LED, LED work that's been done. Um, so we're anticipating that. Uh, with elections, obviously with the, uh, not having a presidential election, election, um, and not really having a governor or anything like that next year. Uh, there's the anticipation that there will be less wages needed for that. Um, some of the priorities to address, you know, the creation of some of these positions um, and some of the reallocation of, uh, grant funding and different things like that. The city manager contingency fund has been reduced uh, to try to accomplish some of those goals. Uh, police fuel. So obviously with, um, you know, some of the costs of fuel, we've definitely seen a reduction in the need, uh, for that line item. And then again, a couple of building outlays, um, you know, because of budgetary concerns and looking at that, there's been some reductions there. As far as operational revenue increases, um, the biggest one obviously is the CRO reimbursement that we're going to get from the school district. So that's obviously a new reimbursement that we'll start to see. Um, and then with the utility, um, every year, there's a payment that is made in lieu of taxes. So our kind of, uh, financial auditing firm looks every year at, you know, all the equipment and the, uh, utility spaces that we have. And that is a calculation that is made then that occurs as a revenue increase. Um, now to kind of talk about specifically some of the COVID-19 related impacts that we're anticipating, uh, in regards to revenue. Um, you know, we're anticipating some reductions in room tax, uh, parking violations, court penalties and costs, uh, building inspector permits, interest revenue. Um, again, we're seeing some general transportation aid reductions coming from the state. Um, some state municipal service aid reductions, video service provider aid, while with the fact that, um, you know, no longer we have a cable channel uh, within the district, we're, we're anticipating some decreases there. Um, there's some library fines that are looking to be reduced, street fines. And again, a lot of this just has to do with, um, you know, COVID-19 related, uh, you know, consequences that we're anticipating will continue. Um, again, that those things could change based on, um, you know, COVID-19 being able to, if we're seeing reductions and obviously the number of affected individuals, these numbers certainly could change. Um, but we definitely wanted to be conservative and kind of, you know, looking at how 2020 impacted the budget, um, and anticipating this occurring in 2021. Now to briefly just kind of go over, uh, the proposed, uh, 2021 capital improvement plan. So these are the selections that were, uh, you know, kind of authorized by the common council last week to be incorporated into the budget. So um, these are specifically the projects that will move forward. So there's the city hall, uh, kind of exterior maintenance for 30,000. Uh, the campground improvements, which are $15,000, uh, by tax levy and then 10,000 being funded by impact fees. Um, the shed, which was a combination of tax levy and then donations. Uh, the tenants court resurfacing, replacing a vehicle. The $35,000, uh, for the train safety replacement. Uh, the camera system server, which was $5,000 of tax levy and then $15,000 being carried from the 2020 CIP. Uh, the interview room camera system upgrades and then the mark squad. And one of the, um, conversations that the chief and I had obviously is the U squad, uh, then is being planned to be transitioned to the fire department um, to meet that requirement that you saw, uh, that was asked for, for potentially having a squad. So um, that is one of the things that we're looking at doing is having that U squad, um, that no longer would be in service from the police department, uh, being transferred then over to the fire department, uh, for their needs. Then obviously some of the other projects, um, are the ones that we just talked about with the debt service being needed for the business highway 151 project and then getting about 1.4 million dollars in grants. Um, the Dewey Street, you know, road project would be 1.2 million dollars in debt service. And then the rest being funded by the, uh, 550 each coming from the water and sewer revenue. Um, street repairs and program maintenance. Again, that's our wheel tax that we get every year. Um, you know, sidewalk repair, which is a split of tax levy and then carryover from the 2020 CIP. Um, looking at highway striping again, being kind of a general $30,000 tax levy that's funded every year. This specifically is the sidewalk project that was approved with 60,000 coming from tax levy. And then 15,000, which would come from the donut, uh, Dunkin' Donuts development agreement. This then is the Deborah Court, uh, sewer ditch, which was the $75,000 additionally that would be looked to be borrowed. And then these, uh, specific items were the, uh, public works. Um, you know, specific truck, uh, the dump truck, the backhoe and the end loader, that would be funded by tax. And then kind of rounding out the capital improvement plan, there's the 59,000 that needs to be taxed levied for the infrastructure refresh that needs to be done. Um, the public transportation bus, which is funded by federal DOT grant dollars. And then a little bit of tax levy is being required for the bus, uh, the taxi vehicle, 77,600 dollars with the rest coming from grants. And then finally creating a $15,000 line item kind of recurring, um, for, uh, CIP projects to support the local match for the airport. Um, so here you can kind of see again, $680,000 being needed on a tax levy to cover the CIP. Uh, 2.2 million dollars being needed on a debt service and bonding, and then 2.7 coming from grants and other sources. So this just kind of sums up, you know, what we're looking to see within the 2021 budget. Um, the general fund, we're looking at, uh, levy increasing by about 6.7. Uh, the taxi bus again, we're not looking to need to levy for that due to, uh, COVID-19, uh, federal support dollars. So that is a reduction. Uh, debt service is looking to go up about 1.7%. Uh, we don't anticipate having to use any tax levy to cover the TID six, uh, TID six deck support. And then the CIP obviously is the breakdown, um, as we talked about with 355,990 coming from the levy. From last year, we have 380 budgeted this year, which is a change of 24,000, 6.7%. So overall, we're looking at about a 4.1 increase in the levy. Um, which then surmises to kind of the options that are currently being reviewed right now by, um, kind of myself and as well as the finance team where we're looking at about, you know, roughly right now, we're anticipating a 3% increase um, in the tax rate, which would be, you know, currently right now at 7.88. In 2021, that would put us at 8.13, which would be an increase of $38, um, from somebody who had a $150,000 home. So essentially that equates to a $3 increase, um, every month, when you kind of prioritize that out. The one consideration that we're looking at is if we were to add in the museum, um, interpretation position, uh, what that would, how that would affect. And it still puts it at about a 3% increase in the, in the, uh, tax levy or tax impact. Uh, goes from 813 to 817. The big difference obviously is there's a little bit of a dollar difference from 44 to 38. So you're adding about $6. Um, it still comes out over the course of essentially 12 months to be roughly about a 3, a $3 increase. So, um, again, you're looking at, you know, anticipating right now about a, uh, $3 per month increase in the levy uh, to cover everything that we are trying to accomplish in the 2021 budget. That's your summary.
Okay, folks, that is the summary. Adam, if somebody wanted to see a line item budget documents. Those are available. I'm assuming besides this presentation?
Correct. So we're, um, our intention, uh, both Nicole and I is to be working on that, obviously after this meeting to get that finalized and get that out to the group um, by the end of the week. So you guys can see the specific, um, implications. We're just waiting on a couple of, you know, we were hoping to get some of the finalized numbers from the department of revenue. We still haven't gotten them. So, um, we're going to give you, you know, as, as close of a finalized version as we can. But yes, you will be getting kind of, as you have in years past, that kind of full line item budget document.
Okay. And then also Adam, uh, you're on regular calls with the league and others. Uh, you've shown some reductions in revenues already. Uh, in terms of municipal services and, uh, I forgot what else. What are you hearing about other possible reduction?
Yeah. So that definitely is kind of the million dollar question. Um, what I would say right now is uh, the money that the, the, I think it was the estimates that occurred in the state in June and July were a lot better than they thought. Um, so that definitely they feel will help 2021. Um, kind of the million dollar question continues to be what happens in 2022. Uh, because that's where you're going to have the full year of kind of a true COVID-19 impact with understanding how that impacts sales tax and how that impacted revenue. So, um, what we're hearing is we've obviously seen a little bit of those reductions occur in the 2021 budget. But, you know, conservatively, there's been talks of there could be anywhere between, you know, a 5% reduction or a 10% reduction, um, depending on what happens. So 2022 is kind of the budget that everybody is optimistically concerned, um, because they don't know what's going on. So there's been a lot of conversation between kind of the league and, uh, the WCMA about, um, you know, knowing that in 2022, there's going to be some potentially, you know, tough conversations of how do you, how do you handle if, if you see a 5% reduction or a 10% reduction in, um, you know, shared, shared revenues, because that has an impact.
Yeah, when shared revenues make up the, uh, a third
Right.
of what we receive, yeah, a 10% reduction would be a dramatic amount of money. Okay, folks, you have the, um, summary. You'll be getting the line item material. Uh, and our budget discussion for this will be next week on Tuesday, the 20th. And our budget discussion for this will be next week on Tuesday, the 20th at 6 o'clock. If you have specific questions, if you have concerns, if you see whatever, start writing those down. I know I've already written two down tonight that I saw and have questions about. So now is the time because setting, I mean, when we set this budget and the CIP, then we're basically locked in for next year. So that's what we're doing in the next month, I guess, because we have hearing or our, our discussion next week. Additional discussion on the 27th if it's needed. And then the public hearing and then the adoption of the budget. So the next six weeks are critical in terms of that. And particularly this next week is critical in terms of any questions, concerns, suggestions, modifications. Rethink, whatever. So I'm not going to take questions tonight because it's already 10:15. I don't think it's a good time to start taking questions at 10:15 after we've had such a long meeting. So I think with that presentation, that we would be ready to take a break at least for a week. And we would do that if somebody would offer a motion.
Move to close the meeting.
I second.
Very good. We're going to move to close this meeting. So movement to adjourn by Ken, second by Kathy. Candace will vote.
Nichols.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
DOS.
Yes.
Kalian.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Stanley.
Yes.
And Candace.
And the class family.
It appears you've been joined by someone, Candace.
Yeah. Can you hear him?
Mic has to be done.
Okay, folks, thank you very much for all of your attention. These meetings are necessary, although they get long. So have a good evening and we'll see you all next.